Room, commissioners are divided by plexiglass barriers and we also have our masks. I'd like to give a brief overview of yesterday's commission staff meeting. You can watch that once again on our website, on Facebook, or on YouTube. We had a discussion from the local health officer, Dr. Gerald Minns. He discussed his new local health order that will go into effect on Sunday. The counselor's office provided an update about the enforcement of the order. And then commissioners received an update about the COVID-19 vaccine rollout. We know that the health department is currently vaccinating residents age 80 and older and healthcare workers. Appointments can be scheduled over the phone by dialing 316-660-1029. They can also be scheduled online by going to SedgwickCounty.org and clicking on the first banner on the homepage. We also know that in conversation with KDHE and based on information that they have provided us, that we can expect to receive additional doses this week and next week with some regularity. And so we're looking forward to that. And once we receive notification of those doses being shipped to Sedgwick County, we will open up more appointments for folks who are waiting to get vaccinated. There are two vaccine clinics operated by Sedgwick County Health Department. One is at Interest Bank Arena and the other is a drive-through clinic at the Wichita Transit Operations Center. Both of those are on Waterman. And if you, as a reminder, if you do have an appointment for your COVID-19 vaccine, please do not arrive more than 15 minutes early. There's no waiting area. There, there is no way to, to keep people seated inside of a waiting area. So please do not arrive more than 15 minutes early. We also know that as of last Wednesday, our story map reported that there were roughly nineteen hun, excuse me, 19,000 doses had been given by Sedgwick County or in Sedgwick County. Transitioning now, we know that February is Black History Month and we're very excited to celebrate this year with our partners at the Kansas African American Museum. I'd like to share a brief video this morning that was highlighted and that was produced by the Today Show about the Doc and Sit 'em. So let me play that now.
Month, we're celebrating Black History with our new series, Changemakers. Now, earlier in the program, Chanel brought us the story of a group of trailblazers from her hometown.
It is a fascinating piece of Black History that you may not know. The Docham Drugstore sit-in in Wichita, Kansas, what happened there still resonates today and just recently led to a powerful and emotional moment of reconciliation. If you wanted to get something to eat at the Docham Drugstore, how did it happen then?
Well, they politely told us we could get food to carry out.
Docham Drugstore in Wichita, Kansas, the site of a civil rights breakthrough that's only beginning to get recognition.
We just went and shifts and sat there. And we were very quiet. Somebody said anything to us, we were not to respond to any negativity, of course, and name-calling and whatever. And there was a lot of that.
In 1958, around two dozen Black students decided to hold a sit-in at Docham, demanding food service at the counter, hoping to prompt change at one store that would ripple through the franchise. A peaceful act that came with risks.
A young white male looked up and saw me and he turned so he would bump me. And he didn't hurt me, but I knew why he did that.
The sit-in went on for three weeks until the owner of Docham Drugstore walked in and told the store manager to serve them. He was losing too much business.
We were just elated when we finally could sit down and have a soda with our friends at the counter.
The Docham Drugstores eventually abolished discriminatory practices at their locations in Wichita, making this the first successful student-led sit-in of the civil rights era. But the story doesn't end there. More than 60 years later, a woman from Georgia, Tracy Harrelson, decided to contact some of those participants. Tracy, tell me your grandfather's connection to the Docham sit-in.
My grandfather, Robert Docham, owned a couple of drugstores under Rexall Drug Company.
Tracy was just six months old when the peaceful protest occurred at one of her grandfather's stores, but now she felt compelled to act.
I was a part of a Zoom call this summer. It was ladies, African-American, Hispanic, white. We were all talking about the racial tension at the time and, you know, how can we make a difference as Christians and as women? And Docham Drugstore sit-in literally came to my mind as I was listening.
Robert Docham's stores once refused to serve food to these young Black students because of the color of their skin. His granddaughter wanted to make amends. What made you decide to reach out to the participants of the sit-in?
I felt like I needed to apologize for my family and I also wanted an opportunity to meet them. It was a courageous thing that they did, so I did Zoom call and met seven of the men and women that were involved. I was able to express an apology to them and I got to hear their stories firsthand.
The video call organized by a local TV station lasted for about an hour and the apology hit home. What did that feel like to hear her speak to you?
It was really, really, really nice of her to want to apologize for her grandfather. Thought it was, you know, a big step. As a group, we really appreciated her apology and it was accepted.
It's interesting because it obviously took courage for them to participate in this. But one could argue that it also takes courage for someone like you to, frankly, it was your grandfather, it wasn't you, but for you to feel moved enough to want to reach out and connect with them and have a conversation.
Yes, they're heroes. They have changed the course of history. This brought an extreme amount of hope and I think that's what God wants to tell us today, too, is that there is hope and there is reconciliation and there is peace available for the ones that are willing to come together.
She is so wonderful. We talked for a while after that. Gosh, so many takeaways. I should quickly thank the Kansas African American Museum because the reality is, I was here in 30 Rockefeller Plaza and they were in Wichita and we were trying to think of a place where they could safely go. And I remember going to the museum growing up, so they opened their doors for this. But it's just such a, especially, it's so timely, even with what we're dealing with right now, the fact that she would reach out and they would have that conversation.
Well, I love the fact that she said she was moved by her Christian faith. She was moved by her faith toward reconciliation. And here's another reminder, this wasn't that long ago.
No. A hundred percent.
Like this, this was not a hundred, two hundred years ago.
Absolutely.
It's a few decades.
And I think sometimes, and you know, especially for younger people when we're reading about history, even my own kids, it's on the page in the book and you almost feel removed from it. And it's like, no, 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 I was literally just sitting next to him for decades.
And you realize that current events become history.
Absolutely. So I should say, we put much more of this and we'll have other Changemaker stories. They're so good. We'll put them on at 2:00 PM and 7:00 PM Eastern today on our streaming channel. That's Today All Day. You can find that on Peacock or you can just go online and go to today.com/allday. There's fantastic content there.
Great story, Beth. Thank you for bringing that to it.
All right. And moving along with that same, in that same vein, so we know that the Kansas African American Museum did host the, the interviews there, but I'd also like to share with everyone what the African American Museum is also doing to celebrate Black History Month. So we have their exhibit Through Our Eyes, Perceptions of African American Life in the 20th Century. This is their current exhibit. It runs through April 24th. Beginning tomorrow, they are going to start TCAM Thursdays on Facebook. It is on the first and third Thursday of every month, having a conversation. And so tomorrow, we know it's the Genesis of Black History Month. And then on the 18th, it'll be Through Our Eyes, Smellin' Lewis. They're also going to have some encore presentations of their Trailblazers Hall of Fame and then to be determined, so certainly keep an eye out, marking the, the historic trail of Hattie McDaniel's birthplace. So very exciting opportunities there. And if you want to have more information, find more information, be sure to follow them on social media or visit their website, tkamuseum.org. And then commissioners on the agenda, we have meeting minutes, appointments to township positions and advisory boards. We're going to recognize the Mini MPA class of 2019, 2020. There's a zone change in District 3. We have donations to Calm Cares Community Crisis Center for suicide prevention. And then the quarterly financial report and a report of boards and bids and contracts. So Chairman, I will hand the meeting to you.
Okay. Thank you, Kate. Good morning, everybody, and welcome, everybody that's watching. Today is our Wednesday, February 3rd, our first meeting in February. And thanks for that presentation, starting off, kicking off Black History Month. So that was really good. I'm glad you shared that with not only us, but hopefully our, everybody that's watching. So very impressive. So with that, I will call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, first item, please.
And vacation, to be observed by a moment of silence, please remain standing for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Roll call. Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Present.
Chairman Meitzner.
Present.
Next item, please.
Public agenda.
Commissioners, we all received yesterday a handful of emails that came in electronically and that were shared with us. I did notice, it was pointed out that a few of them were on a zoning case that was not today's zoning case. It's next, next week, so or the week after, I'm not sure. And so, but then we had a whole, a lot of others. Does anybody have any comments on any of those? Commissioner Howell.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Just wanted to clarify for the people who are interested in that zoning case. It's a ZO, it's, it's a case 2020-0048 deals in area in my district, but that hearing in front of the BOCC right now is scheduled for February the 17th, which is two weeks from today. So anybody who's listening, we did receive at least three comments on the online portal regarding that case, and so I want to make sure that those folks know that. So that's all. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner, for clarifying that. Without any other comments, I'll, I'll make a motion that we receive and file the electronic comments from the public agenda.
Second.
It's been a motion and a second. No other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Okay, and then we also have two persons that have signed up to address us directly and we're do that by phone. We've been continuing to do this by phone, by audio phone before, as soon as the pandemic gets a little bit looser, then we'll go back to live for now. So first up, I believe, is James Kilpatrick. And Mr. Kilpatrick, are you on the phone?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Okay. And we did get a handout of your, of maybe what you're going to address us with. We did receive a handout, so we will be paying attention and you have five minutes to address the commission.
Okay, thank you. I want to thank you for hearing my petition. I am requesting the commission not extend the public health emergency orders concerning COVID-19. The deprivation of income, closing of businesses, and increasing mental health dilemmas to the public far exceed the value of extending the public health orders. The response to COVID-19 has been disproportionate to the danger. I was doing research for this meeting when I realized it would not be productive. The meeting of 12/2/2020, I shared information during the meeting that related current policies and practices were manipulating data to produce an outcome not consistent with managing the disease. Producing additional information illustrating the destructive and unnecessary effects of current policy would not be effective. We have been in the pandemic for a year now and I believe this is enough time for Dr. Gerald Minns and Sedgwick County staff to produce studies to show the positive effects of current strategies in managing the disease. I would like to see those studies published on the Sedgwick County website for evaluation by the public. It will be interesting to see the justification for people losing their income, their businesses, and not being able to support their loved ones. The current policies are against decades of empirical evidence and time-honored policies. I want to emphasize this by reading some quotes from the CDC concerning the 2009 H1N1 pandemic. The CDC explains in an archived webpage that individual cases of H1N1 pandemic influenza were monitored early on to track the spread of the disease. As the virus became widespread, the case counts became increasingly inaccurate representation of the true burden of the disease, as many people were mildly ill and did not seek treatment and the vast majority were not tested. CDC recognized early in the outbreak that once the disease was widespread, the website continues, it would be more valuable to transition to standard surveillance systems to monitor illness, hospitalizations, and deaths. On another webpage, the CDC says that individual case counts became increasingly impractical and not representative of the true extent of the outbreak because only a small proportion of patients were tested for influenza. So the true benefit of keeping track of these numbers is questionable. If it hadn't been for the way they were tracking the disease and manipulating the data and the differences that we have in businesses, it's just too much of a difference between the two ways the pandemics were handled. You might have had a smile when in the last meeting I said, "The election is over, let us return to a normal life." In my research for public health, I found some interesting perspectives. President Biden wants to declare gun violence a public health epidemic to accomplish gun control. Senator Sanders, Representative Torres, Tez, want to declare climate change a public health emergency to force environmental changes. There are groups that want to declare income inequality a public health crisis for wealth wealth redistribution. It appears public health crisis have a future in politics. Those political positions forget the law. I sometimes think the politicians forget they're not the law. When I was in law enforcement, there was a joke, "I can't break the law, I am the law." The law is the U.S. Constitution and the First, Fourth, Fifth, and Ninth Amendments should be remembered. The U.S. Supreme Court in Roman Catholics Diocese versus Governor Andrew Cuomo said the Constitution of Rights are not eliminated in a pandemic. I ask you not to extend the public health orders and return to the people their fortunes, their lives, and their sacred honor. And just like right now, Dr. Minns has chosen to change his directives again, and I'm wondering if this is based on evidence or based upon his just personal feelings that now's the time to do something different? Because if it's evidence, that's one thing. If he's just changing rules because it's his time and his, he decides that this is the way to do it, I think then there has to be a different evaluation on our whole approach to this COVID-19. Is it wrong to be breaking businesses, taking income from people, and then putting people in the hospital and can't even support them? And that hospital is really a strange situation because we used to be able to vet people with viruses if we had a face mask. Now we can't visit them with a face mask or anything else. So I would ask you just not to extend the orders and I want to thank you for your attention.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kilpatrick. Does, any commissioners have any questions or comments? I don't see any. So, Mr. Kilpatrick, thank you and thanks for the handout. And we also have your attachments that you provided as well. So have a good day. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, next up, we have Ms. Janine Schantz. Schantz? Okay, Ms. Janine, are you there?
Yes, I am here. Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning and thank you for addressing the county, commission. You'll have five minutes to address us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. My name is Janine Schon. Although I live in a neighboring community, I work, eat out, and shop in Sedgwick County as does most of my family. My dad was a rather blunt and to-the-point man. He gave life lessons in a very concise way. When he had opportunity to shirk his duty or do things that weren't quite, quite right, I would ask him about it and he would answer, "I want to sleep tonight." In other words, doing right, doing his duty, having a clear conscience was valuable to him. So I ask you, commissioners, how do you sleep at night while favoring restrictive mandates and unfair, unequal, ungrounded treatment of businesses? How do you sleep at night knowing you are picking winners and losers, knowing you are pitting customers against business owners, friend against friend, and the elderly in care homes who are still cruelly isolated from their family? How do you sleep at night? Oh, what a sorry state of affairs for Sedgwick County, who is ruled by an unaccountable, unelected doctor and a commission who believes it is their duty to micromanage the lives of its citizens. How glaring the overreach is. How is it that the unaccountable doctor is allowed to offer no benchmarks for relaxing the restrictions when he is asked directly? How is it that he strings the public along with vague, negative answers while refilling his pen with more ink to write more mandates? No. Your new orders do not go far enough. I think you need to rescind these orders. If we, the people, as Dr. Minns suggested, accept credit for this decline in cases, then we must also accept blame when illness or disease strikes. Is that right? We blame people for getting sick? Do we blame them for heart disease, for cancer? If the masks work, what took so long? The public's been wearing them since July. And then there was the suggestion at the January 6th Commission meeting that Dr. Minns create an appeal process. What? May we please have our event? Oh, please, can we just get together? Can we have this special event that we want to do? How will you pick? What merits will cause you to grant the appeal? How will the favored ones be treated by the non-favored ones? How will you sleep then? Commissioners, do your duty. You have feared far from your oath of office, which was to support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Kansas. David Barton of Wall Builders, Chris Ann Hall of Liberty First University, and Hillsdale College all have great resources for returning to the founding principles of freedom found in our Constitution, which you swore to support. Founding father John Jay, and author of the Federalist Papers and the original chief justice of the U.S. Supreme Court, said, "Every member of the state ought diligently to read and to study the Constitution. By knowing their rights, they will sooner proceed when they are violated and be the better prepared to defend and to serve them." Commissioners, how will you sleep tonight? Good day.
Okay, thank you. Did, does any commissioners have any comments or questions? I don't see any, so thank you for addressing us and have a good day.
Thank you.
Okay. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consideration of Minutes. Item A, regular meeting minutes of December 16th, 2020.
Commissioners, if it's, if it pleases the commission, we have a series of minutes from, and I'd like to put them all in one motion, if you've had a chance to read them all. It's the minutes of December 16th, December 22nd, January 6th, January 13th, January 20th, and January 22nd. I'll make a motion to approve minutes of those meetings.
Second.
So motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? Corrections being none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Appointments. Item G, accept the resignation of Greg Cuban from the Sedgwick County Garden Plain Township clerk position.
Mr. Papun.
Chairman Meitzner, Mike Papun, County Counselor. If it pleases the commission, I think we can take Items G and H together since they involve the same appointment. By state statute, the Board of County Commissioners is required to fill vacancies for township boards. Item G, we have the resignation of Greg Cuban as the Garden Plain Township clerk. I believe Mr. Cuban had moved out of the township district and can no longer serve in that position. And Item H is the recommendation of Commissioner Dennis to appoint Tim Weber as the Garden Plain Township clerk. We have a resolution appointing Tim Weber as the clerk and it's in proper legal form and asks that you approve the resolution.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. First of all, I want to thank Greg Cuban for his service to, to the township as the clerk. He has moved out of the district, so we do need a replacement. I called Tim Weber and he has agreed to step in as clerk. And so I make a motion that we approve Items Golf and Hotel.
Okay, I'll second that. I don't see any other questions or comments, so Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item I, resolution appointing Dave Falk as Sedgwick County Sherman Township Treasurer.
Mr. Papun.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Mike Papun, County Counselor. There is a vacancy for the Sherman County Treasurer. I believe the former candidate was elected on a write-in vote but declined to serve in this position, which created this vacancy. And it is again on the recommendation of Commissioner Dennis to appoint Dave Falk to the Sherman Township Treasurer position. We have a resolution prepared and it's in proper legal form.
Okay, Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And we did have an opening as for the treasurer for Sherman County Township. I did call Dave Falk. He has agreed to serve in that position, so I make a motion that we appoint Dave Falk for the Sherman County Treasurer.
Okay, I'll second that. I don't see any other questions or comments, so Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Next item, please.
Item J, resolution appointing Liz Loera to the Sedgwick County 5th District Citizens' Advisory Board.
Okay, Mr. Papun again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Commissioner Howell's Citizens Advisory Board. I believe this is his last appointment. He's recommending the appointment of Liz Loera to his advisory board. We've prepared a resolution appointing Ms. Loera and would ask that you approve the resolution.
Okay, Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the 11th position on this board, so then now the board will be, will be full with the, with this appointment. I'm excited to make this nomination this morning. She'll be a wonderful addition to this board. And as a, as a side note, our first meeting for this Citizen Advisory Board will be this Friday. That's the 5th of February at 1301 East Galena Street in Wichita. Anybody would like to attend that meeting, please just know that's going to happen at 1301 East Galena in Wichita, 3:30 this Friday on 5th of February. With that, Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we would appoint Liz Loera to this Sedgwick County District Advisory Board, number five.
I'll second that. Okay, any other comments? And congratulations on filling your board and, and having your first meeting. So Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. On to new business. Madam Clerk, please.
New.
Call you.
New business. Item K, presentation of the Mini MPA class of 2019, 2020.
Okay. We have Melissa Walker available, correct? Or is there an introduction by somebody on this item? Tom Stoltz?
I think Dr. Walker will introduce herself, herself chairman. This is, while this is coming up, the Mini MPA awards actually for last spring. We never got them recognized because of COVID, so Dr. Walker will be on board today to...
Okay, looking forward to it. Dr. Walker, are you available? Are you here?
I am. I'm here. Can you hear me? I hope so.
Yes, we can.
Great. So you should see a screen that says Wichita State Mini MPA, 2020, Sedgwick County recipients.
Yes, we do.
You see that?
Yes, we do. We see that.
Thank, thank you, Chairman Meitzner and commissioners for setting aside some time to recognize the participants in last year's Mini MPA. If I can advance these slides? I think I can. I'll, I'll try to introduce you to each one of the participants. The Hugo Wall School of Public Affairs, of which I am a, in which I am a faculty member, each year puts together a mini version of the Masters in Public Administration. So as many of you know, we also have a full-on MPA program and lots of graduates work with the county. We also do the Mini MPA, which meets every Friday morning for three hours for 16 weeks. So each one of the people you're about to meet made a big commitment and so did the county in selecting each one of these individuals. I want to give a particular shout-out to the county because the Capstone project in in the Mini MPA last year, now a distant memory, but it was a thing about this time last year, was to make a presentation to a panel of experts, which included Lori, uh, Laurian Shoalter-Ari and, uh, several other luminaries from the county and the city on the topic of merging Wichita Fire and Sedgwick County Fire District One. This had everything that the Mini MPA teaches. Uh, it's a, it's a matter of training and personnel, of finance, and, and politics, and so many other things. The students did a fantastic job making a presentation. If you ask each one of them what their favorite part of the Mini MPA was last year, they'll probably tell you it was, it was that presentation. So thank you for supporting the Mini MPA, and also, uh, these recipients of the Mini MPA certificate. Thank you also to Tanya Cole and Sabrina Young, who've been instrumental in coordinating all of this, and to Manager Stolz, who was one of the, uh, subject matter experts who presented on strategic planning in last year's Mini MPA. So without further ado, here are the recipients of the Mini MPA degree. Certificate, actually. Hmm. All right, I'm having technical difficulties here. Hold that thought. Think I'm going to just read off their names, Tanya? Um, or maybe it's because I'm trying to share from outside, I'm not sure. Do you want me to stop sharing?
Well, we got, we have Kate working on it.
Yep. Okay. All right, just a second here. Sorry, guys.
It's okay.
Thank you, Kate. All right, so you see before you Emily, who works in strategic communications. Um, she's the social media coordinator. Many of you work closely with her. Um, she was instrumental in the final presentation in helping us present to the panel of experts. Jane Link works in HR. She's the Work Environment Manager. Um, she was our in-house expert on all things HR. Jennifer Wilson is with Comp Care. She's the Behavioral Health Community Coordinator. Kenley Zerling is the Chief Deputy Register, uh, Register of Deeds. Bob Hanson works with the Regional Forensic Science Center. He's the Quality Assurance and Compliance Manager, and always the first to arrive in class. Leila Sturcio is the Accounts Payable Manager with the Division of Finance. Shannon Kingsley is also with the county and the Internal Financial Manager, is the Internal Financial Manager Auditor. Stacy Hansen works with Comp Care, where she is a Program Manager. Brad Burdick, Captain Burdick, is in the Sedgwick County Fire Department. Luke Blankenship is the Support Services Manager with Emergency Communications. Valerie Castor is in the Facilities Department. She's the Project Services Manager. Wendy Humble is the Wellness Coordinator with the Sheriff. Lee McCray is the Principal Management Analyst at the Budget Department. I want you to join me in congratulating the Mini MPA recipients, and thank all of you for supporting their achievement and their work with the county. One of the things that we value, uh, at the Hugo Wall School is preparing people for public service and to advance, and the Mini MPA is part of that, so thank you all. Thank you Chairman Meitzner and Commissioners.
Yes, thank you, Doctor. Um, I recognize many of those recipients, and knowing them personally, I, I'm just, uh, I'm sure they're well rewarded, uh, getting this award, so, uh, thank you for all your work, and if they were here, we would give them an applause, but if they're watching, we're going to applaud anyway, so thank you.
That's right. Thank you.
Any other comments from Commissioners? Okay, I don't see any. You got any closing statements, Dr. Walker?
No, just thank you, and, and recognize how, uh, the, the value of training and development opportunities like this, and thank you for supporting this.
You bet. Commissioner Howell?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I think about what they presented there, uh, as a project, I, I would like to know, did, uh, Manager Stoltz, did you, were you able to hear that presentation?
I did not, sir. I did strategic planning, and then, uh, Laurian was, uh, nice enough to sit in on the capstone, so I did not see the results of that, but will-
It might be nice to have a couple of those folks come forward and actually maybe make a, a summary of that presentation to Commissioners at a personal level, or maybe even a VOCC meeting. I'd like to hear their, hear their thoughts on, on that project, because it's a serious real-world project, or real-world idea, so, uh, I don't want to lose, I don't want to lose the idea. Uh, they did some work on this, and I'd like to know what they, what they concluded.
Very good, sir. We'll range out.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thanks again, Dr. Walker.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Yep.
Have a good day.
You too.
Okay, uh, make a motion to receive and file?
Second.
This motion and a second. Then I'll see other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item L, zone change from RR Rural Residential to SF20 Single Family Residential associated with subdivision case sub 202046.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good morning, Scott. Welcome to the Commission meeting.
Good morning. Thank you very much. Scott Wadel from the Planning Department. This item is a request for a zone change from rural residential to SF20. The site is generally located west of 311th Street and south of 15th Street. The property is currently, it, the property is vacant, however, we'll talk a little bit more about a manufactured home that's been moved to the site. The owner is requesting the rezoning in order to have a single-family house at the site. The property owner is unable to get the necessary permits to have a house at the site currently, because the site does not meet the minimum lot size for the rural residential zoning district. The subject's site is 1.25 acres in size. The minimum lot size for the rural residential zoning district is two acres. This, the lot would meet the minimum SF20 lot size of 20,000 square feet. The property owner has placed a manufactured home on the site. There's a picture of it. The home is not occupied and is not on a permanent foundation. If this zone change is approved, the manufactured home would be required to be placed on a solid foundation and comply with all of the Unified Zoning Code standards for manufactured homes in the county. The subject's site is located just to the west and outside of the Garden Plain urban area of influence. The City of Garden Plain has indicated that they have no objections to the rezoning, so long as the manufactured home is on a permanent foundation and complies with residential design specifications. The properties surrounding the vacant lot are zoned rural residential. Properties to the north, west, and south are developed with single-family homes. Property to the east is in agricultural use. On December 7th, 2020, the District Three Citizen Advisory Board heard the case and voted to recommend approval of the rezoning. A public hearing was held on December 17th, 2020. The Planning Commission voted 10 to 1 to recommend approval of the requested rezoning. 16 protest petitions were submitted, constituting 22.5% of the protest area. The recommended action is to adopt the findings of the MAPC and authorize the signature of the resolution. This action requires a three-quarter majority vote, four out of five votes. The alternatives are to deny the application with alternative findings and override the MAPC recommendation. This would require four out of five votes, or to return the case to the MAPC for consideration with a statement specifying the basis for not approving or denying the application, which requires a simple majority, three out of five votes. I'm aware of one resident here today to speak on the item, and there are also representatives from MABCD.
Okay. Scott, is there any, uh, do we have any questions for Scott at this time? I don't see any. Um, Commissioner Howell, sorry.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm reading the backup material, and I listened to what you said, Scott. Thank you for that presentation.
Sure.
Um, I want to clarify, you said that this, this, uh, area to be rezoned, or for consideration here is outside the Garden Plain area of influence?
That is correct. It's just pretty much across the street from where that-
But yet, they still, they still didn't meet an issue and opinion.
Uh, we did receive an email, and that was from a staff person who is the city clerk, the deputy city clerk, uh, indicating that they had no objections. I'm not aware of what deliberations, um, led to that email, I just know that we have that email.
Yeah, I guess my assumption would be that the city council must have met, there must have been a public hearing for them to, for them to conclude that, but I don't know that, so.
Yeah. I don't know either.
Okay. I don't see any other, oh, Commissioner Cruz, question?
If this plot of land were to be, um, zoned today, all of it, can you talk about the history? If you, sorry. Um, if this plot of land were to be zoned today, what would, can you talk about the history of this? So was this, talk about the history of this, please.
Sure, sure.
Let me be clear.
From discussions with staff, my understanding is that what most likely, likely happened here is that this was, uh, platted, I'm sorry, maybe not platted, but this parcel was created prior to zoning. And so therefore, when there was zoning instituted in the county, I believe that was in the 80s? Okay, so I'm seeing a bunch of heads nodding on that. In the 80s, um, it was essentially painted with a broad brush. The rural residential was applied to a large swath of area, and these parcels, uh, quite a, a number of them are smaller than the minimum lot size, which is the situation that we find this property to be in. So it's been rezoned, it's been zoned to rural residential, and it's, it doesn't meet the minimum size requirements for that zoning district. So in order to get the building permits to have a house or a building on the property, they need to meet, uh, the zoning minimum requirements for the lot size. And in order to do that, that's why they're seeking the rezoning to SF20.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I don't see any other questions at this time. Oh, Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sorry for the follow-up question here, but-
Okay.
Curiously, if this remained as rural, rural residential, would this home still be allowed to be placed on there? I mean, it's not large enough, because it doesn't have two acres, but it's already, it's already RR. So with its current classification, would the home be allowed to be placed there?
Uh, my understanding is no. They would not be able to get the necessary permits to have, to, for the construction and for occupation, because they do not meet the minimum requirements of the zoning district in terms of lot size.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I don't see any other questions, so I think this, uh, hearing needs to, public hearing? Right. So we, uh, we need to open it up for public comment, so anybody from the public like to address us, uh, you can come to the podium and state your name and your address. And we usually, uh, keep just about five minutes, okay?
Okay. My name is Sylvia Woodard. I live at 1721 Eileen, which is the dirt road. That's the mobile homes here, the Kim and Oz dirt road, and then, uh, so we have straight via the mobile home.
Okay.
Okay? I wasn't here on the very beginning part of him speaking. I did see, though, on the geographical location to where he said, stated that the entire area east of that property is agriculture, that is not actually true. They are plotted for two and a half acre homes right across from that mobile home, and there's at least three, if not four, already built in that area. So I don't know how they came up with only 22% petition for the area. Are they going off of the entire percentage of-
I think it's, yeah.
Area square-
Percentage of area.
Area versus-
Right.
People who actually live there.
Right. It's the percentage of area.
Okay. So that, I feel like, is a disservice to those who do live here, because it should go off of the residents in the area versus the square footage or square acres of the area. Because it affects those who live in the area, not agricultural ground.
Okay.
Does that-
Yeah.
Make more sense?
I understand.
Because I don't know that, that geographical image was actually accurate that you guys saw.
Right. And, and-
That's current as of today.
And it is a, it is a unique, uh, protest area because of the combination of-
And part of that thing is, is, you know, we moved out here seven, eight years, nine years ago-
Mm-hmm.
-as rural residential, and now you're expecting all of us to change to single residential, family residential, for someone who did not do their due diligence when they first bought the property in the, in the first place. So you're expecting all of us to change for someone who, and their realtor, who did not do their appropriate evaluation and research.
Okay.
So if you could please consider those as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Understood. I don't see any other questions. Thank you for addressing us. Anybody else? I'm sorry? Are there, we have two people that are on the phone. Is there anybody else in the audience here that wants to address us? I don't see so. So, um, um, we will need you, uh, the first speaker, please, uh, state your name and address.
Sylvia Woodard, 1721 Eileen, Garden Plain.
Okay.
Can you hear us?
Yes, thank you, sorry.
Okay.
I was watching it online, and there's like a delay, so my brain's trying to catch up.
Okay.
Are you guys listening to me?
Yes, ma'am, we can hear you. We can hear you.
Okay.
Please state your name and, state your name and address, and then we'll, you have about five minutes to address us, okay?
Okay, my name is Megan Tinkley, and I live at 1721 South 311. So not the house directly next to this plot of land that we're talking about, but, um, one, one spot next to it. Um, I guess it would be to the south of it. Um, so we bought our house in February of last year, and we were pumped because it was, um, you know, with our dream home, it's our first home as a family, so we love living out there, um, and it's a beautiful area. And I'm not, I, I, we don't have any issues with them, you know, building, um, a, you know, a home there, or whatever, you know, the decision is made, but the, the rezoning is the problem, um, because I, kind of like the previous, um, lady mentioned, you know, we bought it, um, at rural residential for a reason, um, and, and also the, the home that is on the property right now, I don't know if there have been pictures, um, or if you guys have seen it. I, I literally just got on the call, it's like 10 minutes ago, I wasn't able to see the beginning of the, the meeting, so I apologize for that, but, um, the, the home that's on there right now is, is, is not something that, you know, I mean, it's a mobile home, and it, it doesn't look great, um, it's less than ideal and appealing, um, and I don't, I mean, I just don't feel like that's something that, that we should have to be worried about, you know? If somebody, you know, buys a plot of land, great, that's perfect, um, do whatever you need to do, but I don't, I don't know that the rules should change just because somebody didn't do, you know, their, their background work on it. We shouldn't be subjected to that, I don't feel. So I just kind of wanted to let you guys know that, that we're not very content with the situation, and hopefully that's, you know, taken into consideration moving forward.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. I don't see any questions from the Commission. Again, thank you for your, for your comments.
Okay.
And we have another speaker, I believe, on hold.
We'll have one more, Chairman.
Um, there's a question, is the applicant here by chance? No? Okay.
The next speaker should be ready.
Okay.
Brent, are you on the line?
Yes.
I am still here, so...
Okay, Megan, you can hang up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Megan.
Good morning, sir. We can hear you. Please state your name and address, and you have about five minutes to address the commission.
Yes, it's Brent Woodard. Address is 1721 Eileen, Garden Plain. I believe my wife spoke earlier. I just wanted to make comments about the majority of the people that opposed the rezoning, not because of it being a trailer or a mobile home, but just because it does not match the houses that are already built in the area. I believe it was a 1,200 or 1,600 square foot minimum, and it had to be stick-built for the houses in our area. And I think the housing condition east of 311 might be a little... have different restrictions, I'm not sure. But with that mobile home, or modular home getting moved in, it doesn't match the existing area, and it will... if they showed you the best picture of that trailer, probably they could have showed you. The other sides are not as pretty as that one. But it will drive our property values down, and I can say, I'm in favor if they want to build a stick-built house, I don't have a problem with that. But moving modular homes in where there are no other modular homes in our neighborhood or surrounding area, I don't agree with, and the majority of the people who live in that area do not either. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Woodard. Is any questions for Mr. Brent Woodard? I don't see any at this time. So thank you again for addressing us, and have a nice day.
Thanks, sir.
And with that, I don't see any... there's no other speakers on the phone, nobody else here to address, so we will close the public comment and bring the item back to the bench and back with Scott. Commissioner Dennis.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it. Scott, just to clarify, we are looking at just one piece of property to be rezoned from a rural residential to SF-20. We're not looking at the entire subdivision, correct?
That is correct, sir.
Very good. The other thing that came up is that when I'm looking at your protest area going east, I wasn't aware that there were lots to the east. Did you receive any protest on any of the property to the east?
We... that map depicts every protest that we receive, whether or not it's a valid one, we put it on the map. So for instance, there are yellow parcels, properties on this map. It indicates that they submitted one, but it did not meet the requirements to be a formal protest. However, all the ones that are in red met all of the stipulations that are required, and they've been counted. So, and you can see the one even in blue that's outside, extends outside of the protest area.
Very good, thank you. I think probably the remainder of my questions are for Justin, if you don't mind if Justin Wagner comes up and answers my questions.
Morning, Commissioner, yes?
Good morning, Justin. Morning, Justin. You and I have spoken several times, and I've spoken to Scott several times about this issue, because it does concern me with the protest area. It is in my district. I'm not certain that this... it's actually called legally a residential design manufactured home, but everybody else thinks it's a trailer house, but... So what I wanted to know is... and I look at the area, and I look at the character of the neighborhood and the public composition, and those are a couple of the different items that you can look at for the golden rules. And remember, it's been four years since I've been deeply involved in the golden rules, so help me out a little bit, okay?
Sure.
If we deny this, and the owner of this piece of property decides to take us to court, do we have very strong legal options in that case?
I'm gonna... Commissioner Dennis, to that question, I'm gonna give an answer that maybe gives some more context if that would be helpful here, I think, because you did ask about the golden factors. I mean, first off, I'd point out that you and the other commissioners, you all sit at a quasi-judicial capacity here, so I don't make the decision... it's the five of you as a board who make the decision on whether, how the golden factors or any other considerations on a zoning case apply. In this case, you know, one of the golden factors is obviously neighborhood opposition. There is clearly neighborhood opposition, there's a protest that exceeds a 20% capacity, requires a supermajority vote, so that's clearly established, both by comments today and by those protest petitions. That's one of the elements of the golden factors. I'd point out, there's case law that says that if, you know, that says the plebiscite of the neighbors, essentially neighborhood opposition in and of itself and only by itself is not sufficient, typically is a legal grounds to deny a zone change. There are, of course, other golden factors that you would have to look at. There, I think there's one in particular, you talked about the character of the neighborhood. Traditionally, character of the neighborhood is, I mean, it is a golden factor. It is worth noting, in Kansas, there's a statute that applies, and let me kind of back up first of all and say that this is just a zone change for a single-family use under SF-20. It's not a zone change for a manufactured home. It's for any single-family use. But specifically in Kansas, if a residential design manufactured home is what's proposed to be located, which it's my understanding from speaking with staff, it's that is what is currently sitting on the property, although not permitted, not occupied, or any of those things. If that's what's proposed to be located, there's a statute that says that counties that have zoning codes on that, you cannot adopt or enforce regulations that have the effect of excluding those residential design manufactured homes from single-family residential districts solely because they're manufactured homes. However, that statute does say that counties can have certain architectural or aesthetic standards that are applicable to those residential design manufactured homes to ensure compatibility with site-built housing. We... our zoning code does have those standards. There's a page full of standards that apply within our zoning code. Any residential design manufactured home in any single-family residential district within City Wichita, unincorporated area of Sedgwick County, would have to meet those standards when it's located, and as this house is proposed to be located, would have to meet those standards in order to get a building permit and a certificate of occupancy. So I would point out that even though aesthetically, I think there are some comments, like you said, that this may not meet the character of the neighborhood, there are some limitations under state law, and also within our zoning code in terms of how you consider this manufactured home relative to the surrounding properties. Does that help answer your question, Commissioner Dennis?
Absolutely, I appreciate it, and that's been my concern all along, is we have to comply with the law as we move forward, and what we're looking at is strictly a zoning case rather than the type of house that's going on this zoning case. As we move forward, you said that there's an entire page of requirements for a residential design manufactured home, and I have a whole copy of that page. Is there something that we can do to ensure that whatever is located on this piece of property does comply with those requirements?
Well, I guess, first off, I'd say that as it sits today, those requirements would have to be met, and I think there's a question... you guys, as a board, will often hear conditional use cases. We talk about whether we can modify or add or subtract conditions. On zone changes, there's no such thing as a... there aren't conditions that you add or apply. One tool that's within our zoning code is what's called a protective overlay, and there's no recommendation for protective overlay on this, but I will give a bit of background. Would you like some background on that, Commissioner Dennis?
Yes, please.
Okay. The... just to clarify, those can be applied in combination with any base zoning district. In this case, if a zoning change was approved, it'd be an SF-20 zoning district. Can actually make the use more restrictive in some way to individual projects or specific properties, to ensure compatibility among incompatible or potentially incompatible land uses, to ease the transition from one zoning district to another, to address sites or land uses with specific requirements, and to guide development in unusual situations or unique circumstances. One of the things that could be applied here, if there was, if it was the will of the board to adopt a protective overlay, would be to seek to amend or further, I guess I would say, to ensure that if those standards that we talked about, the page of standards, if somehow, let's say, two or three years down the line, those standards were watered down, but the zone change had been approved, there would be the opportunity, if that was the will of the board, to establish a protective overlay to not allow less restrictive standards to apply, so that the neighbors or the area around there would not be detrimentally impacted by a watering down of those provisions. That's something that could be done. There's other things that could be done with protective overlay. I'd be happy to answer any questions on that.
Very good. So to summarize what you said in your legal analysis in plain language, we can approve this, but put a protective overlay on it to make sure that the design standards are met, and we do have M, A, B, C, D in the audience, I see. They would be the ones that would ensure that any building or any house placed on this would comply with those, with that overlay then for the future.
That's correct. And to clarify a bit, I think I forgot to mention is that the idea behind that is it would be forward-looking for any newly-installed manufactured, residential design manufactured homes that would be placed on the property. We don't usually go in and make properties, change their aesthetics after the zoning's been approved, after the building permit's been approved, but it would be forward-looking. So in case, you know, for one reason or another, they didn't install it, but then in the meantime, our standards would change, it would ensure that any lightened-up standards would not be able to apply to this property.
Very good. One other thing that I should have mentioned before I started talking was that I have received ex parte contact on this issue, and I had not made up my mind as we moved through this process, and I just wanted to declare that I have had ex parte contact. I don't know if any other commissioners have had that or not, but they may need to declare that. I see that there's some other questions before that we move forward, but just to clarify, I have been working with Justin and Scott on this issue, and I want to make sure that whatever we do is 100% in accordance with the rules, regulations, and legality of the state laws. So I do have a supplemental motion that none of the commissioners have, that I'd like to make later on, but I want to make sure that all the commissioners have had an opportunity to have their questions answered. So I don't know if you want to pass out my supplemental motion now or wait until the other commissioners have had an opportunity to ask your questions.
At this point, Commissioner Dennis, I think my preference would be to wait until any of such motion might be made.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Dennis. Before we go to Commissioner Howe, I'll just declare also, I think I had a email, an ex parte communication, by one email, I recall, and I did read it, but I have an open mind to listen to this dialogue today, for sure. So next up is Commissioner Howe.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a full disclosure, I don't think I actually have had any ex parte communication on this, and if I received something in email, I don't remember that, so I think I'm clean slate here. And I'm clearly going into this without really any opinion whatsoever, I'm just letting the hearing speak to me today. I do have a question, this might be for Scott, but... so if you have a property that's zoned to rural residential, and it's less than two acres, what can you build on that? If you can't get a building permit, what can you do with that property?
Excellent question. I'll defer that one to J.R. Cox.
Okay.
Good morning, J.R. Cox, Metropolitan Area Planning Department, for the record. My opinion would be, to build a structure, probably nothing. It could be open space, it could be used for, I suppose, picnics, but when it doesn't meet, I'm sorry, when it doesn't meet the minimum lot size, the permit won't be issued for construction of a primary structure on the lot.
Okay, well, with that in mind, I'm looking at the aerial view, and I'm not sure which one of you guys can answer this question, but, you know, this is just anecdotal, but I'm looking at the aerial view of this, it looks like there's about 15 properties right around this, many of them in the protest petition, that have a lot size that's smaller than the one that's being discussed, and most of those have homes on them.
That's correct. I believe these were all built prior to zoning in the county. Countywide zoning came around, I believe, in 1985. So I think the subdivision to the west, which is, it looks like a platted subdivision, was developed before that time. So if this subdivision existed today, and these lots were vacant, like this lot is, they would have to go through the same process to build.
And by, again, because it's history, we're not going to go back and revisit the zoning, but in reality, if we looked at the zoning laws today, these all should be SF-20.
In all likelihood, correct. I'd say that's correct, yes.
Okay. Another question. Someone mentioned the term "stick-built" versus "manufactured," and I guess, I'm going back to my tiny home discussion back in 2016 and 2017, 2018. There was some discussion about trying to regulate tiny homes in Sedgwick County, and I learned a lot about what we can and cannot do through zoning and through planning, things like that. I don't know that we can determine, you know, the size of a home or the method of manufacture. I think, obviously, being on the foundation is a key character trait of this particular home, but how it came to be, I don't... it sounds like, again, I think this goes back to what Commissioner Dennis was saying. I'm not sure we have any authority whatsoever to stipulate how that home was created. I mean, if it's manufactured in a different location and brought on versus built on-site, is that something we really can get involved in?
I would, of course, defer to legal staff, but my opinion would be that our zoning code, the Wichita-Sedgwick County Unified Zoning Code, specifies that an RDM, residential design manufactured home, by definition, is considered a single-family dwelling.
Right.
It's stick-built, moved in, same difference.
Now, I understand, I mean, I see the pictures, this home's already been set on the property, just staged there, waiting for, I guess, for approval. Had they not set that on that site, I think that, I think that the effect that it's sitting there, it probably caused a lot of reaction. Had they not done that and asked for this beforehand, we don't know what would have happened, but my guess is, people might have assumed they were going to build a home on-site, and we may not even be here today. We don't know that, though. Is there any thought to, I guess, that the reaction happened when this home got set on the property, is that what kind of spurred a lot of this opposition?
I guess I would just have to give an opinion. Obviously, I don't live out there, and I'm not one of the nearby residents, but I would say that, yes, it's the home and the aesthetics of the home that have raised the issue. Had there not been a home there, just been a vacant lot, the assumption very likely might have been that someone would have built a site-built home as opposed to a modular, a move-in home. There are also move-in homes that are called modular homes, and the distinction between a modular and an RDM, and maybe this is more information than you all want to know, but a modular home is actually built to the locally adopted building and trade codes, as opposed to a manufactured home, which is built to the HUD standards.
One of the conferees today, one of the conferees today that testified said that he wouldn't have a problem if this was changed to SF-20, as long as it was a stick-built home. We can't, again, so I'm going to go back to my previous question, we're not really able to make that determination, but...
Again, I would defer to law, but I would say no.
And then, finally, going through the golden factors here, I do see, you know, the character of the neighborhood is noted. I see that there's beautiful homes around that. Of course, I don't see, I don't have pictures of all of the homes, so I'm not sure how fair that is for me to make an assessment on that. The property's been vacant for forever, it's never had anything built on there in the past, so that's one of the items on here. Whether it will detrimentally affect nearby properties, it possibly might, but we don't know that. I don't know, has anybody provided any evidence of what detrimental means in this case?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay. And obviously, opposition has been noted as well. So I, again, I, right now, I'm kind of going to listen to the other people speak here, but I'll say thank you for the answers to the questions, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay, next was Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. So I guess the question that I was trying to ask earlier is, if the zoning codes were set in 1985, if this was built in 1986, they would all be SF-20? Is that what we're...
If they were built, so the zoning code, let's say the zoning took place, they're all rural residential, these lots do not, that do not meet two acres in size, would have to request a rezoning in order to be able to build structures on those properties.
Okay. Have you, has anyone talked to the homeowner about what their plans are for their home?
We have been in communications, I'll tell you, we did reach out to them to inquire about whether or not they were going to be at this meeting. They did not respond. So the communications that we've had with them were when they initially, when the case was initially brought forward. We do know that they've mentioned that their intention is to have that manufactured home on the site and use that as residence, but beyond that, we're not aware of their intentions.
So the requirements that they'll have to meet would be to have a permanent foundation, they'll have to fix the siding on the side of their house, they'll have to do a lot of things that they probably currently haven't done, and just to be clear, I have had no ex parte conversations with anyone. But they can't really do anything now because they don't have a permit, so they just plopped the home there in hopes that they would be able to get this so it looks the way it looks because they haven't been able to work on it. Would you say that that's true?
I would say that that is a fair rationale for the situation that we see today.
Okay. So what happens if this does pass today and they don't meet those requirements? Is there a certain amount of time in which they have to meet those requirements? So it's zoned SF-20 today, let's say, and how quickly do they have to meet those requirements?
Excellent question, and that really gets into zoning code enforcement, and I'll turn that over to Kelly for the answer.
Hi, Kelly Dixon, Metropolitan Area Building. To preface my answer to you, I've been in contact with the applicant from the day they moved it on, and they came in to get a permit, and I denied it because of the zoning issues. It does, she does plan to have that as her primary residence. I believe she'd be there by herself, but I'm not 100% sure on that. So as far as how long do they have after the zoning, I know that I've been getting calls daily from the applicant and her contractors wanting to know, how quick can we get this done after you guys make your decision? They're going to put this in place as soon as the plating is... plating is completed. We would typically only enforce the, if they leave that mobile home there and they don't install it, I don't know, 30, 60 days down the line, we would probably send them a notice of violation for not setting the mobile home, give them 30 days to get the permits for it, and go from there. If they don't, we would require them to move it.
So what I'm hearing from you is you have a pretty antsy homeowner that is ready to get this thing.
Yes. I got a call from her contractor yesterday wanting to know if they could start pouring the concrete after they heard from you today, which they can't, but, I mean, they're ready to go.
Okay. Thank you so much for that.
Sure.
Any more questions?
No more questions. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Lopez.
Oh, I think Commissioner Cruz just asked all my questions, but I did receive an email ex parte to this and did not make up my mind because of it.
Okay. Anything else? So I think most of the commission has weighed in and a lot of questions. So Commissioner Dennis, I'll take it back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. Justin, the piece of paper you gave me today that is in our zoning regulations today on residential design manufactured homes includes what the roof requirements are, the siding requirements, how to install the building entrance and landing areas, all the transportation equipment, including the gear, the tongues, axles, all have to be removed after it was installed on the lot, the finished floor elevation, there are certain requirements there, attached additions or requirements, and garages requirements. And every one of these items, if we included it as a protective overlay on this zoning change, then M, A, B, C, D, as they go through their inspection process, would verify each one of these things were in compliance with this piece of property and with whatever building was on the property, correct?
That matches my understanding, Commissioner Dennis. I think on any building permit, as we, I think when Kelly Dixon spoke, he said, you know, the building permit came in, it didn't match the zoning, and so that's part of what they check, and a protective overlay would show up on that zoning check.
Well, very good. Then I do have a motion that I'd like to make. If you could pass that motion out to our county commissioners, because it's different than the motion that you have in your books currently. But what the motion is going to do is it's going to require a protective overlay on this piece of property. It's going to allow it to be rezoned as SF-20, but all of the different items that I read are going to be part of the protective overlay on this piece of property to ensure that it protects this neighborhood and the future homeowner of this piece of property. So as I go through this, this is a long motion.
Yeah, but Commissioner...
Make sure that we touch all bases.
Let me ask a quick question. So in what you've talked about, roof, siding, installation, that's on the back of this motion that we just received? That would be, that would be what you're...
That's absolutely true.
That would be the protective overlay guidelines?
Correct.
That's on the back. Okay. And meanwhile, your motion is on the front.
What commissioners have right now is the motion on one side and what the protective overlay is on the opposite side. So I move that the Board of County Commissioners approve the requested zone change and also establish a protective overlay for this property that would require any residential design manufactured home on this property to meet the site development standards for residential design manufactured homes, including in Article 4, Section D dot 1 through D dot 9 of the Wichita-Sedgwick County Unified Zoning Code as presently stated within the zoning code. In the event that the zoning code may be amended in the future to contain more restrictive site development standards for residential design manufactured homes, such standards would apply to this property for any newly located residential manufactured home that may be located on the property after such more restrictive standards would become effective. In the event that the zoning code may be amended in the future to make the site development standards for residential design manufactured homes less restrictive, the standards included within the text of the protective overlay would apply to this property. I know it's a long motion, but we needed to touch all bases and make sure that we were legal in all the steps. So that's my motion, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
So the short version is if there's increased standards that would be required on this property?
Correct.
And if there's less standards, then the current standards would still apply?
Correct.
Okay. And can you explain the, there might be another question, not yet, but explain what the vote would have to be? I know, Scott, you mentioned it before.
Yeah, this would require four votes because it would both, it would be an approval that would be required to override the protest petition, so it would require four votes for that reason. It would also be a modification of the recommendation from the Planning Commission, so for that reason, it would also require four votes to approve it.
Okay. All right. So there had been a motion, and I will second that motion.
Can I add one more thing?
Well, ma'am, we already had the public comment.
You're okay to increase all of our property values for what you did, Joe.
Ma'am, I hear what you're saying. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So reading the first paragraph of this motion, again, I haven't seen this until just a moment ago, so I'm trying to get up to speed here. Why is this motion necessary if this is already our zoning code for manufactured homes?
I think, if Commissioner Dennis can clarify, if I'm misinterpreting, but I think it would set a floor on the standards to where they wouldn't be, the standards for any residential design manufactured home on this parcel would not be any less than they are today. In case the standards would change in the future, let's say they don't locate this home there, or in the future they want to locate a residential design manufactured home there, and the standards in our zoning code have changed, it would enshrine the standards they are today as a floor for this property. So it would be slightly more restrictive than what's in place just under the zoning code. That's a good question to ask, though.
So it's just insurance that should the code change for all manufactured homes for the entire county, that we would lessen those restrictions on manufactured homes? If this one would actually be at the higher, more restrictive current standard.
That's correct.
But right now, as it sits today, if we don't pass this, the current standard would still apply.
That's correct.
Okay. So I guess I don't see that this is necessary personally, but I also have concerns about protective overlay that targets a single property. I think that there's an argument that we're essentially picking on a particular landowner, homeowner, that we're giving them different standards than we are to everybody else in the entire community. Is there a concern about that?
Well, I think what I would say is, I think as commissioners, that's for the five of you to decide one way or another, I do think in the zoning code, I mean, I read through, let me find the exact text here, the standards for why you can issue a protective overlay, one of which is to try to kind of smooth over inconsistencies between zoning districts. And as Commissioner Cruz was asking about earlier, I mean, these are technically different zoning districts. There's also an aesthetics difference here that could justify, I think, a protective overlay, just making sure that the standards won't be watered down in the future potentially, or, you know, upholding our code as it's worded today. So I think there's some bases there to make this more restrictive, and it's not uncommon for a protective overlay to apply to a single property. There's nothing, I think as long as any conditions that would be imposed would be reasonable, I think that's the standard you'd probably need to meet.
You know, there are many neighborhoods across our community that have HOAs or covenants amongst neighbors. Could this neighborhood have done that as well to take care of this?
It could have, Commissioner Howell, and that's one of, I didn't read that part of the statute, but if this was a historic neighborhood, the residential design manufactured home standards, you can actually go a lot higher than that. You could have historic provisions apply. Or if there'd been restrictive covenants, which are really private restrictions on use, they don't impact government zoning. But this property is unplatted. There's at least one or two plats that kind of surround this property. I think when I was looking at the GIS map at one point, and I'm not aware of any restrictive covenants. If there are any, it wouldn't impact the zoning, but it certainly would be a matter between any parties who might seek to enforce those covenants and the property owner who's applying for the zoning.
I guess my point would be, if we don't pass the motion as it's currently worded, some of them just go with what MIPC approved, couldn't this neighborhood still establish a covenant that would essentially create more restrictive guidelines for their community?
They could seek to do that, but they wouldn't be able to establish it on this particular property owner. There's a few reasons, one of which is it's not part of a homeowners association and a plat. It's its own parcel. It's going through the plating process. So without that property owner's approval, no, they would not be able to have anything that would apply to this property.
All right. I'll listen to your comments. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Lopez.
I should start waiting to flip my light on before people talk, because his first question was mine, so you've answered it. Thank you.
It's all right. It's a common happening, so. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you. Has anybody addressed the property values?
And I may defer a little bit, since I'm at the podium, I'll just say, I think there were general comments about property values at the Planning Commission level. I don't believe any evidence was submitted to substantiate it in any way. That I'd let Scott supplement.
Thank you. I would just add that property values do come up quite a bit in zoning cases, and I think the challenge with that is just, as Justin has indicated, is providing evidence that there will be an adverse impact. You know, I think a lot of times we see cases where we've got rezonings and changes coming to neighborhoods, and a lot of people are concerned because a home is the largest, you know, factor of wealth that a lot of families have, so they are worried about that impact. However, I think we have not, in my experience, we've not been shown evidence of adverse impacts to property values based on a particular rezoning. So it's a very high hurdle threshold to get to, and we just haven't seen substantive evidence of that yet. And I'm not speaking about this individual case, I'm just saying broadly, overall.
But specifically for this case, no evidence was presented that having a manufactured home on this lot would decrease the property values of neighbors around.
That is correct. To my knowledge, no evidence of that has been submitted.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. A lengthy and healthy discussion and factual. This is not, this is a little bit unique to the normal zoning things that we run into, but there is a motion, Commissioner Dennis's motion, and there's been a second, but Commissioner Howell has a comment.
Thank you, Chairman. So I guess I'd like to do an explanation of vote before we vote, and I do plan to support the motion. I don't think that it's likely that we're going to change this zoning code for other homes, and so I'm not overly concerned about that right now, but I think that the evidence is compelling me to vote in favor of this. I think it needs to move forward because I believe that if you own a piece of property and you're not allowed to develop that property, especially when all of the neighbors have similar property sizes, they've already done exactly what this applicant's trying to do. The type of housing, of course, I don't think we can differentiate between how the housing is constructed. It's not legal for us to do that. I think everything really indicates we really do need to approve this, and so I'm glad to support the motion. I don't know that this is necessary to do it this way, but I think that there's nothing wrong with doing it this way, so I'll support the motion. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other questions or comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meister?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you again, Scott, J.R., everybody, for your help and your explanations.
J.R., glad to see you're back well.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, good. Okay, next item. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item M, acceptance of multiple donations to Comcare Community Crisis Center for Suicide Prevention.
Okay. What do we have here? Is Joan, Joan here?
We're going to get Joan zoomed in.
Okay. Do we want to, it is 10:30. Want to take a five-minute break? Why don't we do that? Take a quick five-minute break. So we'll be back here in about, on my watch, it's 10:26. We'll be back here shortly after 10:30.
Joan, if you're on the phone...
Joan, if you're on the phone.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Appreciate. We're done with our five-minute break. Everybody's getting resettled back into the office here, so we will continue on with the meeting. So, Madam Clerk, we'll repeat what the next item is, please.
Item M, acceptance of multiple donations to Calm Care Community Crisis Center for Suicide Prevention.
Okay, and with that, oh, there we have Joan. Joan's on Zoom. Good morning, Joan.
Good morning.
We see you and hear you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Joan Tammany, Executive Director with Calm Care. I'm here today because we received five donations totaling $675 for the Community Crisis Center. First, I would like to publicly thank Derry and Kay Larson of Larson and Company, P.A. This family generously donated $500 to help suicide prevention efforts through Calm Care crisis. While I'm not personally sure if this is in honor of a loved one or a friend, I'm confident that this family has been impacted by a mental health crisis, given this generous donation. Our intent would be to utilize these funds to continue our suicide prevention education efforts and to apply the donation towards scholarships for others to attend mental health first aid classes offered through Calm Care. The other four donations totaling 175 come from friends, family, and other loved ones of Jacob Olenbarger, who passed away on December 1st, 2020. Jacob was born in Newton. He attended schools in Arkansas, and at the time of his death, at age 16, he was in the 11th grade at Sterling Academy. We learned from his obituary that he loved playing football, he loved basketball, loved working out in the gym, but most of all, he cherished spending time with his little brother, family, and friends. I personally, I'm always saddened by any loss of others to suicide, but it's particularly hard when deceased ones have yet to even reach the peak of their life, as with Jacob. We all know that one life lost to suicide impacts a whole wealth of others, and I'm hoping that Jacob's legacy lives on through these donations that will be used to help others. Anytime we get donations, it's an awesome time to educate everyone on the fact that suicide and mental illness do not discriminate by age or any other demographic metric. Mental illness affects one in four individuals at some point in his or her life, and while the physical aspects of the epidemic are visible, the emotional aspects are still yet to be fully known. But we do know that people in our community are struggling. They're stressed due to economics, they're stressed due to isolation, fear of the illness, disrupted routines, and many are experiencing real grief due to losses. And then we also have a level of civil unrest. So I'm proud to say that Calm Care has wonderfully trained staff to deliver mental health first aid, which offers tools to help start a conversation and listen compassionately should someone have thoughts of suicide and give them information, our community resources where they can get help. But I also want to make sure that people know that our Community Crisis Center is available 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Anyone can pick up the phone and call or walk in for help. That number is 6607-500. And if you're worried about someone, let them know you care and ask frankly if they're thinking about death. While depression and thoughts of suicide may linger over time, we do know that the impulse to act on that is in the moment. So listening and talking to someone in pain can prevent a suicide. I'm also heartened, and I want to share that we are getting closer to the universal number to call when in a crisis. In July 2022, the new 988 number will launch nationally, and like 911, it will be critical in saving the lives of others, including those in our community. The Kansas Department of Aging and Disability Services received a grant to start a planning process in Kansas regarding 988, and Calm Care is going to be part of that grant. So we need to keep our eyes and ears open, but hopefully this, well, it should be a reality come next year. So I'm here to ask that you acknowledge the donations and authorize the chairman to sign, and I'll stand for any questions.
Okay, thank you, Joan. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. You know, each Friday, we have a discussion around what's gonna go on our agenda, and most generally, donations like this might just fall on the consent agenda, that we would approve all at once with the rest of the consent agenda. And because it is so vital to keep this conversation alive and to address these really tough conversations in our community, I ask to have this pulled and put on new business so that we can have this conversation, so that we can have Joan give the updates of what it really means. And again, to keep this conversation alive, every single person in this community is affected by mental health in one way, shape, or form, and the more we speak about it and the more we de-stigmatize the fact that it's okay to get help, I believe that's, that's the best course of action. So Chairman, when appropriate, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, Commissioner, thank you for your comments. It is a very serious item, and I don't see any other comments, so we're ready to, for you to make a motion.
So I'd like to make a motion that we accept the multiple donations to Calm Care Community Crisis Center and approve the submission of the donations.
I'll second that. Okay, is there any other comments, Commissioners? I don't see any, so Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Thank you, Joan. Have a nice day, and thanks to all your staff for all the stuff they've been doing this past year and continue to do. So it's our sincere appreciation.
Thank you. I'll pass that information along.
Okay. All right. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item N, presentation of the quarterly financial report.
Brent, welcome back. It's good to see you. You feeling all right?
Thank you, Chairman. It's good to be back, and as I've said earlier, it's good to feel good.
Yes, I, I know the feeling, too. I think about all of us do. Three of us are. So anyway, okay, Brent.
All right. Thank you, Chairman Meitzner, members of the Board of County Commission. For the record, I'm Brent Shelton, your Deputy CFO, here today to present the quarterly financial report for the fourth quarter of fiscal year 2020. This will represent the county's financial position at the end of the year 2020. This report is possible due to a lot of heavy lifting and work that's done by finance staff in both the budget and accounting departments, and I'm indeed in their debt for the work that they've done to put the document together. Just as a reminder, the numbers in the quarterly financial report are based on unaudited financial statements. As we go through the audit process early this year, some of the numbers may be subject to minor adjustments, and just for the public's consumption, this document's been presented to you. It will be made available on our website at the conclusion of this presentation. As we typically begin the quarterly financial report, we look at the change in fund balance and at the ending fund balances, and we project these throughout the year. And then at this time, we give you the final fund balances across the county's operating funds. If you look at the middle, or middle row, you'll see, if you go all the way to the right and look at the total, that the net change in fund balance across all funds for Sejury County exceeds $61 million at the end of the year 2020. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean that we have a lot of money available to do things with, because if we look at the County General Fund and then the two funds in the middle, the property tax and non-property tax-supported funds, in those operating funds, a lot of CARES money that we receive from the federal government for the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Fund, those dollars were transferred into these funds to take care of certain personnel, eligible personnel expenditures. Those monies are sitting there because, while we received the money in 2020, the pandemic didn't end on the last day of the year. So those funds are available as we continue to battle the pandemic and respond to the community's needs in those areas. The Debt Service Fund, which is the second column, you'll note we have some red ink there in terms of the change in fund balance. It's down because we have less debt in 2020 than we had in 2019. We don't need to maintain the same fund balance that we have maintained in the past. The two columns on the right, Fire District General Fund, you'll notice an increase in their fund balance of $930,000. Couple of things have contributed to the fund balance. First of all, they've collected a little bit more in fire service fees as well as property tax, but the major portion of this is the receipt of two of our fire service contract funds in calendar year 2020. We received the 2019 and 2020 fund in 2020. If you recall, about a year ago, we simplified the process for calculating the fire service contract fees that certain non-exempt properties pay for fire service protection. So we have in the Fire District, sometimes industrial revenue bonds will be issued, property tax is exempt, and those property owners then pay a fee for fire protection because it exempts the fire department from those, from property taxes. So basically, we got two payments, two large payments of $600,000 during 2020. One was for 2019, and one was for 2020. We'll see in a little more detail what that looks like as we get into more detail with the Fire District. And finally, we have about a $2.7 million increase in the Enterprise and Internal Service Funds. As you know, we had a hailstorm at the zoo. That represents insurance claim proceeds that will be spent out over the course of 2021, making roof repairs and other repairs, insurance claim repairs at the zoo. So while we do have healthy cash balances at this point, we do continue to have some needs that we're not sure what they're gonna look like as we continue through the pandemic. Let's take a look at the county property tax-supported funds in a little bit more detail. And with these, we typically look at revenues and then at expenditures. You'll notice about a $24 million increase in the revenues year over year in the county property tax-supported funds. There are eight of these funds that have specific property tax levies. This goes back to what we talked about on the prior slide. We had about $17.7 million in CARES funds transfers into these funds for some of those eligible personnel expenditures. We also saw an increase in our tax base, and that resulted in about an additional $6 million overall to the county in our property tax collections. The next slide shows the expenditures in those same funds, and we've been on a downward trajectory for the last couple of years, a slight downward movement. And that's typically, as I mentioned earlier, we have lower debt payments contributing to that reduction, as well as an overall freezing of spending at the prior year's level, which has contributed to an overall reduction in expenditures in those funds. A little deeper dive in the revenues in those funds, and I would point out some, as we go through some of these slides, there are a lot of different rows. We'll kind of point out the ones that have some significant change year over year. In the top two columns, or top two rows, are property and sales and use taxes. We saw a pretty significant increase in property tax revenues year over year due to the increase in our tax base. And we also were a bit surprised to see by the end of the year that we'd collected about another half million dollars in sales and use tax that we weren't expecting. We were projecting that this would go down as a result of the economic hardships that we felt and are still feeling due to the pandemic. If we notice on further officer fees, that's a 38.9%, or about a million and a half dollar increase in officer fees. These are per-page document filing fees in the Registry of Deeds Office. We've had a pretty robust real estate market locally over the past year. We've also seen a lowering of interest rates, and a lot of mortgage refinancing activity occurred. Anytime those documents are filed, we receive those per-page document filing fees. So that, those two things contributed to that increase. Of note, the penalties and interest on back taxes. We haven't seen that on a quarterly report in the past, but we had an eight and a half percent increase, and it wasn't a great big dollar amount, but we're seeing more people redeeming their delinquent property taxes prior to the foreclosure auction. This is a really good thing to have happen, because if a property goes to foreclosure, we may not be made whole if it goes to the auction, because we pay attorney fee, title insurance fees, and a lot of fees to get to that point. And then we share in the proceeds of the amount that that property is sold for. If a property is redeemed, all penalties, all interest, all fees are collected by that property owner as they redeem that property. So this is a good trend to see, and I just wanted to make note of some positive things that are going on in that area. I would point out just above that, in terms of investment income, we talked a few minutes ago about officer fees, or those document filing fees going up. Those low-interest rates contributed to a reduction in our investment income year over year of about $2.3 million. We can look at that in a little more detail as we get further along. Key personnel expenditures in these property tax-supported funds, I would point out to you that some areas where we, well, first of all, look at the bottom line, a 0.01% increase in our personnel expenditures across these funds. That's about $20,000 out of $139 million expended. So the size of that box stayed flat. There was some movement within, in terms of some items, salaries and wages were up 0.6%. The biggest item in terms of dollars, the employer portion of insurance premiums, just kind of on the same trajectory that it's been on. Workers' compensation premiums, if you'll note, increased by 97%. The anomaly on that row is that in 2019, we passed along some savings as a result of good workers' comp experience and passed along some savings to departments. So the number in 2018 was about $1.3 million. So we had a one-time dip, we're back at that level. Otherwise, the pay pool for bonuses didn't exist in 2020. We saw a reduction in overtime. Overall, these remained relatively flat. There are also some non-personnel expenditures in those funds, and just of note, fleet management charges, you'll see, were down a little bit. Fewer miles were driven, and we had some lower fuel costs. Medical professional services that are provided in the adult detention facility continue to kind of go up, even though we had a lower inmate population this year. There were more medical needs, and those costs continue to go up. Software and hardware maintenance, a lot of projects that were approved by the Technology Review Board were undertaken in 2020, and we had a large percentage increase in our operating supplies. A lot of those occurred as a result of COVID responses. There was a separate fund set up in finance to pay for PPE and some things of that nature. So overall, we did see a reduction in our non-personnel expenditures in those funds. Shifting gears a bit now to the Fire District. We talked earlier about their increase in fund balance year over year. This shows the revenue increase from 19.5 to $20.8 million from 2019 to 2020. If we had received those payments in, one in 2019 and one in 20, you're looking at a much more gradual increase. The 19.5 last year would have been 20.1, and we'd have been at 20.2 this year. So that one-time event kind of made the chart move a little differently. The Fire Department did receive additional property tax revenue year over year, so that contributed to that increase as well. The expenditures in the Fire District remain pretty consistent, slight increase year over year. Last year, there was a transfer for Fire Station 31 that contributed to the higher amount in 2019 than in 2020. Looking a little bit at the revenues and expenditures in a little more detail in the Fire District, here we see the increase in their tax revenue, both property and motor vehicle taxes, fairly modest changes in salaries and wages, pension contributions. But the bottom two lines, we see the movement, the increase in capital outlay. They had some planned expenditures in 2020 for vehicles that were higher than the prior year. That transfer out didn't occur in 2020, so that is shown here as the reduction in transfers in 2020 versus 2019. Now let's look at the non-property tax-supported funds. The, these are funds, operating funds for which there is not a designated property tax levy, and you will see a huge jump between 2019 and you will see a huge jump between 2019 and 2020. We're going to see some big effects of CARES funding on some of the next few slides. $117.1 billion was, is our difference here between these two. That represents primarily the money that we received, the $99.6 million in CARES funds, the additional funding that we received in the state pass-through. So those are reflected in that big increase in the revenues in those funds.
Brent, that'd be the 99 plus the money we've got from the state? That adds up to the 100.
And there was some also, I think some of the provider relief funds went in there as well. That's pretty much a result of federal funds for the pandemic.
So next year, we're going to see that line go straight back down to 71 or whatever?
Well, we'll see what Congress does.
True.
Right.
I'm not good at forecasting anymore.
All right. Thanks for letting me interrupt.
Okay, you bet. Our expenditures in those same funds, you'll note, about an $85 million increase. That represents funds that were spent, CARES funds that were spent before the end of the year. $28 million in grant awards that went out in the programs that you approved, some transfers out of this that went into some of the other funds. This is a non-property tax fund. We had, we set up a special fund, and then, as you saw earlier, we'd move some of that to the general fund. We'd moved it to some other places for those personnel expenditures. We also saw a jump in medical supplies, surprisingly enough, of about $6.5 million. So all of those things and the additional COVID expenditures have contributed to that, that big jump. This shows in a little more detail those revenues. You'll see on the top column, we didn't get CARES money in 2019, and we had about $100 million in 2020. The third column shows the $12 million in the state pass-through that was used for economic development to fight the, or to kind of counteract the high unemployment that we were experiencing. The next row shows Medicaid fees going down by about $4 million, almost 30%. Calm care had to shift the way they delivered service. They delivered fewer services. That resulted in fewer Medicaid fees being paid. The next column shows the transfers in, and those are, again, some of the transfers that were made within the funds, the non-property tax-supported funds. And I think everything else is kind of, is not as affected by COVID, and we kind of see continued trajectory that we were on before. On the expenditure side, for those funds, you'll see the grant awards, huge increase there. That's the $28 million in grants that the commission has awarded to, for different programs that were set up in terms of COVID response. Small reduction in salaries and wages. If you'll recall, we had some voluntary and involuntary furloughs last year. That contributed to that reduction in these funds. And then you have transfers on the next two lines that were for COVID-related items. And then the $6.5 million that we had in additional medical supplies compared to $30,000 the prior year. Because of Calm Care's change in service delivery, you'll see a reduction of about 20%, 19% in the Medicaid pass-through payments. And finally, other equipment were expenditures that were directly made for COVID response. So basically, most of the movement occurred because of COVID. Our total fund balance is shown on a year-over-year basis for each quarter on the next slide. Now, this is an erratic-looking chart, but it's really pretty consistent. If you look at the first quarter of one year versus the first quarter of the next year, you'll see that the chart levels out. But we receive property tax distributions in January, and we receive property tax distributions in June, the first two months, or the first two quarters of the year. So our balance goes up, and then we spend it down through the rest of the year. The next chart just depicts the same data, only in terms of our unrestricted fund balances, a percentage of our budgeted expenditures. 20% is the minimum per county policy that we can have, and you'll see that we've maintained those fund balances above that level going back five or six years. The slide I don't want to talk about is our investment portfolio because it doesn't look as good as it did last year. If you'll notice, the far right side, we have the gold bar that's up there. It shows that we have about $635 million in funds in the investment portfolio at the end of the year. It was up by over $300 million from the prior quarter because of the first half taxes were collected. They're held by the treasurer. We invest those proceeds until they're distributed in January. In terms of our income from investments this year was 3.3 million. That was against about 5 something the year before. I think the only positive thing I can say is that our 0.15% return compared to the benchmark is point, it's 0.10. So we're barely above the benchmark at this point in time. But as our financial instruments mature, they're reinvested in things that don't earn the same yield. Briefly highlighting three capital projects that were completed or nearly completed at the end of the year. The Osage Country Edition Benefit District were some road and improvements, some drainage improvements in the housing district. Those were all completed in December of 2020. The developers are now going to be petitioning for special assessments going forward, and we'll be recovering those funds through special assessments. The second column was the intersection improvement at 55th Street and South Meridian. That project was scheduled to be completed at the end of the year. It went a little bit into January, but that was turn lanes at Meridian and 55th Street. It also included a half a mile of new sidewalk, and some of the costs of that were shared with the Hayesville School District. And in the final column there shows a bridge was replaced at 143rd Street East, north of Pawnee. This bridge was poorly rated and a load posted on it, and it's now got a new bridge, about 2,700 cars traveling across it every day, and a lot of that is traffic going to public school. So if I was to summarize where we are, I would say, in terms of fiscal and economic strengths, we continue to maintain that AAA credit rating from standard and pores. When we got that renewed in 2020, they cautioned us that that was subject to change because of our local employment situation, but it has improved on a monthly basis since then. So we're feeling pretty good about that. As you note, from the differences that we saw year over year, a lot of CARES money was deposited into different funds, used for qualified personnel reimbursements during the fourth quarter. In terms of trends, our property tax collections remain consistent. There were some concerns about people not being able to pay taxes, but we're seeing pretty basic, pretty boring trend lines there. As noted earlier, sales tax collection rates, although they didn't go up as much as the year before, continued to increase. And then the effects of the lower interest rates, more real estate activity, but it also negatively impacts our investment income. Looking ahead, we continue to hold the line on the operational expenses. A lot of things have been frozen at prior year levels. Personnel expenditures for 2021 will be pretty much flat compared to 2020, and our main focus as we move forward over the next few months will be continued response to the pandemic as we move forward. So I would recommend that you receive and file the report. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Okay, Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Brent. I'm glad to see you here feeling, feeling good.
Thank you.
Just a couple of quick questions. So on Slide 7, we're talking about personnel expenditures. You know, on Slide 22, you say personnel expenditures are flat. Our overtime increased 16%. I do probably, obviously, we were in a pandemic last year, so we had a lot of folks working a lot of hours. But I wonder, and Tom, maybe you can answer this question. Over the past six months last year, met with multiple department heads who are concerned for their operations, who are concerned for their employees. When we have folks that we're training that are then leaving for other, other departments across the state, across the county, it's, it's important for us to put a plan in place that says, Sedgwick County employees, we value you, and we see, we see that we need to change how we're paying our employees. And so I know that that's a huge challenge, and I don't expect you to have the answer right now, but I bet you have been working on it. And I'd like for you to share maybe what you have in store for our employees here in Sedgwick County.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner, for asking that question and bringing that up. That will be the topic of discussion during your budget workshop coming up in just a couple of weeks now. Two things to remember regarding employees and programmatic issues within the county. We were behind the curve before the pandemic started. We had a plan in place to try to reconcile that slowly over time to bring employees up to a more market-friendly wage rate. When COVID hit, we landlocked everything. It was the fiscally responsible thing to do. It remains to be the fiscally responsible thing to do as we navigate through the last, hopefully, the last two quarters of what has been an unknown for us. So we will, we have a salary study that is concluding, which we actually started before the pandemic. Our HR director will deliver all of that to you during the workshop, and we'll begin to lay out the plan that we had intended to implement last year but had to put on hold because of COVID. We'll refresh that, bring that back in front of you at our workshop, and, and with your guidance, we'll, we'll go through the building of the 2022 budget and regarding salary and operational issues beyond. We're not going to, quite honestly, quite frankly, we're not going to be able to fix it in a budget year. It's going to be a generational type of commitment that we will, we will require, and we will lay out our plan in just a few weeks.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. My second question is on Slide 17. I just wonder if we've ever seen percentages like that before. I just want to kind of point that out because, you know, in my two years now, I don't, I don't believe I've ever seen percentages like that. So I think it's, I think that just goes to show we had a pretty, pretty crazy year. Slide 21, the capital projects. Remind me how these are, how we go about determining what capital projects are done when it comes to roads and bridges and things that are structural in nature? Are those based on a, like, the worst one in the county is done first? Can you explain how those are done? And maybe we have, maybe somebody else needs to answer that question.
I can give you a real thumbnail sketch because it's outside my wheelhouse. But as I understood, the capital improvement program has, is a five-year program, and they identify projects in need. I think they've identified a number of deficient bridges that, and so the focus is prioritizing those. And then, over the course of time, then that document gets amended and updated as we move into the budget year.
Okay, so it's, I mean, I'm sure all commissioners have things that they'd like to see completed in their district, but we're going, we're using data to determine how these capital projects are done.
Yes, ma'am.
And then, what is the forecast for COVID expenses? Because we're still incurring costs, and until there is a package from the federal level, are we prepared to handle COVID expenses for 2021?
We think that we're pretty well positioned to handle them. I think in two weeks, we're going to deliver a CARES Act and COVID information to you at the county commission meeting. So I think we can give you a little more, a deeper dive at that time. If there are anything specific that you'd like for us to look at, share that information with us, and we'll make sure to have that available.
Okay. Thank you. Those are all my questions, Chairman.
Okay, Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, welcome back. Appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
Second of all, congratulations to the entire Finance Department on your AAA bond rating. It's fantastic continuing that, so I want to congratulate you there. One very brief question, and I probably have missed this for four years, and for some reason, it stuck out today.
Okay.
On Slide 12, it says that we have revenue for the fire district for motor vehicle taxes of almost $2 million. Where do we get motor vehicle taxes going into the fire department? I guess I never picked that up before.
Motor vehicle taxes are distributed to tax authorities that are supported by property tax. So if a, if it's, like, for our eight funds that are supported by property tax, anything that, if you've got a property tax levy, then motor vehicle taxes are distributed to those funds. So that's where it comes from. It's a formula that comes down from the, from the state.
Okay, so that's part of the 6% or whatever it is, the state that, and then a little bit of that they send back to different cities, county, and so forth.
Correct.
All right. I apologize. I've never picked that up before. Thank you.
You bet.
Okay, Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the presentation. Again, welcome back.
Thank you, sir.
A lot of great information in here, but there's a lot of caveats in this report because of the CARES funding is really skewed almost every slide.
Yes.
So as a commissioner, I'm having, I'm struggling trying to assess our fiscal health apart from, apart from CARES funds. And I wouldn't want to ask this for future reports. I don't think this is going to be maybe a troublesome request, but I guess I would wonder if, if anybody without, you know, someone in your department would look at this and say, if you take out the CARES funds, there's something that should, should be alarming, okay, that we ought to know about. I don't, I don't know how to find those things because CARES funds is totally skewed. Almost everything has been presented today. So I'm concerned that maybe there's things going on that we don't know about because I can't see it. I guess I just want to ask you, as a professional of your, of your department, subject matter expert, if you or Lindsay or whoever has that concern about something that may be buried in this report, I would hope that you would, you know, highlight that some other way. Again, I think that this is one of the most interesting reports I've ever seen because I think there's just so many really crazy numbers in here, but I understand it. I just don't know if there's anything in there I should be concerned about. And I do agree with Commissioner Cruz. I've never seen a number that large on this report, a percentage that on Slide 17. I think the biggest number, the biggest number I see on here is 21,000% change, for example. That's strange. The other thing I'm concerned about, I guess, is going forward, the investment income can't go below zero. At least, I guess, maybe it can. I don't know. How we, what, do we have someone that can kind of project the floor on what we'll see on Slide, Slide 20 going forward? I'm a little concerned that that's such a drastic change that we may not be expecting what might go in, what might be the impact of that going forward. So I guess I just want to ask, I guess, for some, some feedback in the next, maybe next week or two, if you guys would be willing to think about my comments and maybe report back to me. I'd love that.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, I would, I can make a motion. We'd receive and file also.
Okay, I'll second that. And Brent, thanks for the presentation, and congratulations again on the AAA rating. Surprising, besides all the numbers, the, I guess, thank you to the property owners for paying their taxes, their, the rates, the collection rates, and is nice. And the sales tax slight increase was, again, surprising when we thought it was going to be way less. So maybe people are, citizens are spending money here, here in the county that might otherwise be spent other places. So I want to thank So I want to thank all you for the hard work and thank the citizens of Sedgwick County for being responsible this last year and with their own, in their own financial world. So with that, there's a motion and a second to receive and file. Any other comments? Being done, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Hal?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Thanks again, Brent. Lindsay, thanks to you and your staff. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item A, report of the Boards of Bids and Contracts regular meeting on January 28, 2021.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners.
Joe Thomas. Hi, Joe. Welcome to the meeting.
How are you? Thank you very much. Joe Thomas, purchasing director. We're seeking your approval on six items resulting from a regular meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts on January 28. And our first item is on-call marketing services for the Department on Aging. And this recommendation is to accept the proposal from Apples and Arrows for the hourly rates listed and for a contract period of three years. Our second item is the road improvements. This is the 2021 Crack Seal Project for Public Works. And this recommendation is to accept the low bid from Pavement Pros LLC in the amount Item number three is senior shopping and delivery service for Department on Aging. And this recommendation is to accept the quote from Senior Services Incorporated of Wichita at the rate listed and establish contract through December 31, 2021. Item number four, fire alarm testing and inspection for various departments. And this recommendation is to accept the overall low bid from Marmic Fire and Safety at the rates listed and to establish contract pricing for one year with three one-year options to renew. Item number five is the Kronos Workforce Timekeeper Maintenance and Support for Division of Information and Technology. This recommendation is to accept the quote from Kronos Incorporated in the amount of And this is effective starting March 17, 2021 through March 16, 2022. And our final item, item six, is the 2021 SAP Enterprise Support for Enterprise Resource Planning. This recommendation is to accept the quote from SAP Public Services Incorporated, and this is in the amount of $460,516.17, and it's good through December 31, 2021. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval.
Okay. You've had a busy recent period.
Yes, sir.
All right. Is there any questions or comments about any of the items? I don't see any at this point, so I'll make a motion to approve the bid board as presented, or the bids and contracts. Motion and a second. I don't see any other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Hal?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thanks, Joe. Thanks, please thank your committee for all the work. Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to make a motion for an off-agenda item.
Okay, I'll second that. There'll be a motion and a second for an off-agenda item. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Hal?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. I'll need to wait for Commissioner Lopez. I'd like to give her the opportunity, so we might need to take just a brief moment to allow her to return to the board.
Okay.
This is a long meeting, so we're going through a lot of water up here today. Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
We'd like to hear from you today.
Oh, gosh, I'm so sorry. I had a, I have an autoimmune disease, so I have to take medicine at a certain time. I wasn't expecting to be in here.
That's okay.
Quite so long, so, okay. Yes, so first, I would like to start just by reminding everybody that, you know, we're sitting up here as the county's Board of Health right now. And, you know, first, I also really want to thank Dr. Menz for, you know, really everything he's done this past year. I can't imagine that's been an easy job when people are so passionate on both sides and really trying to do what's best for the community. I do agree that we're in a good place to start having these conversations on how we can safely open back up and in the best way. And I think I speak for all of us when I say the last thing that, you know, we want to do is see the positivity rate in our hospital rates start climbing again. You know, we've made a lot of sacrifices as a community this last year, and it would be really, you know, hard to watch that happen. So regardless of where we stand on these issues today, we all want the same end goal. So just keeping that in mind. So after our staff meeting yesterday, I did reach out to some of our leaders in our medical community to see if my concerns that I mentioned were overly cautious in any way. I believe it's important to hear from them because if our rates start to increase again, they're really the ones that are going to bear the brunt of what that would look like. They did not indicate any concern with what I was stating yesterday, so I was really just wanting to get their guidance, but that's what I got from them. One of the biggest concerns that every person I spoke to yesterday was just making sure that we don't let this become where people think that we are now in the clear, because that's not the case. And so we really still have to maintain the tools that we have in our toolbox, which are the social distancing, wearing a mask, and washing your hands. So one thing from yesterday that I kind of, that I was worried about was regarding opening or mask gatherings from 25 to quadrupling to 100. I propose that we find a compromise there, and we start with doubling, so 25 to 50 instead of the 100. And if we don't see a drastic rise with the 50, then incrementally stepping that up to 100. And I'd also like to see the indoor sports activities still limited to two spectators instead of four, but opening the outdoor events to four. I spoke with an infectious disease doctor last night who stated that if we could guarantee that all four lived in the same, in the same house, or that each facility that has indoor games could make enough space for the separation of each four, for each participant playing, then the worry would not be the same. I know Kasia is going to the two-person model, but, you know, we just don't have the data to prove that that's a safe option at this point. Wichita Public Schools are staying with two participants at this time. You know, I take my daughter to soccer games, and just with our experiences we've had so far, I don't see how we can do that safely when we double the spectators at each game. During just the game, there's so many people, but about 20 minutes before games are over, the next two teams come in. And if we're looking at a, you know, five to six courts, that's five to six extra games, which is two teams each, and coaches and parents. And so going from two to four really adds a lot of people at once, and so I would be worried about that. And then, on a completely different side note, just because this is the first time I've set up here as the Board of Health, I would like to just bring up an old discussion that happened last year that you guys talked about, which is removing the Board of Health responsibilities from the county commission. One thing that I would like to know is just when, and I don't expect an answer today, but just when that could be safely done. So I don't know if that's been looked into yet. I know that it's best if we get through this as is, but, you know, when the best time to safely do that would be? I had a meeting with Councilwoman Tuttle earlier this week, and she mentioned a study that they had done with what kind of, like, professional backgrounds should be on a Board of Health, and so I would love to look at that. I know this is not something that's going to be, something this big is not going to be an overnight change. So if we can get at least an idea of what factors we're looking at to safely transition this, I would like to see us start the process before that so we can be ready for it at that time and not have to, you know, to continue to wait. So, I mean, I know I shared my thoughts yesterday, but, and I'd like to open that up for discussion with my colleagues, but I will be making those two proposed amendments to the order that we saw yesterday.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you. So just for clarification, you mentioned that Kasia was going to two. They're actually going to four, so.
That's what I meant. I'm sorry.
Yeah, so I just want to make that clarification. And then, I, I think that we, also for clarity's sake, we will be taking these two up at different, we'll be taking them up as separate motions. Can we please hand those out, Justin?
Yes, question.
So I have these. I wonder if my other, if my colleagues have them.
Thank you, Commissioner Cruz. I'll get used to this eventually, and it will be.
It's fine. Just to clarify, you want both of the motions handed out?
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you, Justin.
Okay, you want to make these motions?
Oh, yeah, I can make them. That's fine.
Or one at a time, I guess, is what we're going to do.
So the first one would just be that I move the Board amends order number 21-2, Section 3.4, to limit mass gatherings to 50 total individuals instead of 100.
Second?
Motion and a second on the gathering size. Is there any other comments? Commissioner Hal, your questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's interesting to me that we've been encouraged this entire process, most of a year, to accept the recommendations of our health officer, Dr. Menz. And it's interesting to me that Dr. Menz is the one that recommended, with the health order that he signed yesterday, to go to 100. And he did say, as a caveat to that, we would be watching the data, and if the data gets moving in the wrong direction, that we would have to go back and revisit this and possibly make a different, revert back to different numbers again, become more restrictive, I guess. I don't know if it makes sense to, to, I could use the word throttle, like, almost like a, like a car, hit the gas or hit the brake, based on your, on your goal here. I would like to see us target, if you will, the right policy for this community based on data. And right now, the data is actually very encouraging. I don't want to go back to negative trend lines, obviously. I want our people to be protected. But I also think that we need to make that move as soon as possible rather than needlessly delay those changes. If we can, if we can be safe and be at larger numbers, that's actually a positive move for our community. With respect to one of the comments that was made, I would like to say that the Sedgwick County Commission is the Board of Health. I believe this is in state statute. Can you please speak to that?
Justin Waggoner, Assistant County Counselor. Commissioner Hal, yes, there is a state statute that establishes the Board of County Commissioners as the Board of Health. Did you have further questions on that?
Well, I guess I'm curious, is there precedent anywhere in our state where the Board, the county commissioners have handed that over to a separate board rather than the elected officials essentially taking that role?
I'm not sure what other counties have done in that regard, Commissioner Hal. I do know that, and some of this changed a little bit here locally, just to clarify, but we, in Sedgwick County, we used to have a charter resolution that made the, made an appointed Board of Health with a number of medical professionals that were appointed. I believe it was Charter Resolution Number 54, and then Charter Resolution 58, both of which changed that to make the Board of County Commissioners once again the Board of Health. But prior to that, the, there was a group of medical, primarily medical professionals, I don't think exclusively, who were appointed, I think entirely by the Board of County Commissioners. There may have been, I think, some ability for the city of Wichita to have input, but I can't remember that for sure right now, Commissioner Hal. But there's a specific statute that says that for counties over 300,000 people, the Board of County Commissioners sits as the Board of Health. There's an ability. I haven't done, gone back and looked at my research, but to Commissioner Lopez's question earlier about how that could be done, my off-the-cuff recollection is if there'd be a charter resolution approved by the Board of County Commissioners on some non-uniform legislation, there'd be another four votes of commissioners, you could set up a separate Board of Health. But to your original question, you are the Board of Health, there's an ability to change that with a charter resolution, is my understanding.
So one way to maybe address that would be to go into state law and potentially make some state, some changes in state statute would be one way to go there. Another way would probably be with the urban area designation, maybe do something that's non-standard for the state of Kansas, specifically for Sedgwick County. I guess.
Commissioner, can I, can I just, excuse the interruption. I would, can we have that conversation about this after we do these two?
That'd be fine, as long as we get back to it at some point.
Right, I think so. And that, out of respect for.
Okay, with all, you know, with all due respect, I guess I would just oppose the change. I think that we, we ought to throttle this to what Dr. Menz recommended, and we'll watch the data very closely. Thank you, thank you, Chairman.
And again, I didn't mean to interrupt as much as I, respecting Commissioner Lopez's request, and we could have a good discussion on that, if so be it. So is there any other? Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you. You know, I realize that these decisions and this are not always popular. And I also respect the discussion. I respect my colleagues and how they're going to make a decision, but after consultation with physicians in our community, after what Dr. Menz had stated yesterday about receiving a lot of phone calls and pressure, I do believe that this specific gathering size, taking it from 25 to 100, I don't know that we should be quadrupling something this quickly. And that is the recommendation that we've heard from physicians regarding this. And so that's the reason why I will be supporting it, because I don't think that we should be taking it such a drastic leap when we aren't out of the clear yet. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Lopez?
I would just make one more comment regarding that. So my biggest concern with going from 25 to 100 is that, well, we're watching the scientific method just play out in front of us in real time, and it will be really hard for us to watch our numbers rise, making so many changes, not knowing which one is the one that's really causing that effect. And the last thing I want to see is us make these changes, our numbers start to rise, we don't know which one is really kind of the cause of that, and then having to revert back. Because I think going backwards is going to be, you know, much harder than taking small incremental steps forward. We all want to get to the 100. I mean, that's, that's the goal. I want to go to gatherings of 100, and I want, you know, all those things just as much as anybody else, but I just want to do them as safe as possible so we're not having to go and revert back, because again, that would be much harder to do.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll keep my comments fairly short. I've supported Dr. Menz each step of the way. I'm going to continue to support Dr. Menz. I've also stated a number of times that my goal is to get our economy open, get schools with kids back in schools, get people back at work. And we're not going to do that until we can try and move forward. If we see that there's a problem, we've had special meetings a number of times last year where we have made adjustments. So right now, I'm going to support Dr. Menz's order. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. I don't see any other, any other comments. So on this gathering size motion and a second, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
No.
Commissioner Hal?
No.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
No. So that motion failed three to two. The next motion, supporting events attendance.
That's me, sorry. So I do, I have a second motion, and that would be that I move the Board that amends order number 2120, Section 3.4.D., Paragraphs 1 and 2, to read as follows. For indoor facilities, there shall be a maximum of two attendees per participant. After the participant's activity has concluded, both participants and the accompanying attendees shall leave the area where the activity has occurred. And two, for outdoor facilities, there shall be a maximum of four attendees per participant. be a maximum of four attendees per participant. And after the participant's activity has concluded, both the participants and the accompanying attendees shall leave the area where the activity has occurred.
Second.
Okay, your motion in a second. I have a quick question, maybe for, yes, Justin or Mike. So the CACIA ruling to go to four, regardless of what happens here on this motion, every high school game can still have four participants? Or do we know?
Again, Justin Wagner, Assistant County Counselor. Chairman, on that question, let me kind of go step through a couple of things. The order, as it's worded, has an exemption to where it does not apply to activities regulated by the Kansas State High School Activities Association or by school districts. And so, most high school activity events would fit within that category unless a change was made to modify that particular exemption. But it would apply to other events that would not be sporting events that would fit into that, adult and youth recreational sports activities that are non-Kansas State High School activities or school-regulated.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Once again, I guess I have one basic question on the health order. Is there a total person gathering limit for high school sporting activity? Does it have a large gymnasium and there's four people or two people per spectator, per player?
It would be, there's not going to be one, because we've exempted that from the definition of mass gathering. And so instead, the, as worded now, the four attendees per participant would be the cap.
But that's specifically for schools. Now, if you were, let's say, Striker Sports, for example, they would still have the gathering, they would have gathering limits for the total number of people in the building, regardless of the number of spectators. Is that correct?
The exemption I mentioned earlier for Kansas State High School Activities Association and high school sports didn't, is different than the exemption for mass gathering. So those events would still be the non-Kansas State High School activities and the non-school related activities would still be subject to the four attendees per participant rules.
Let me ask the question differently. I think that we bypassed each other in our thoughts.
Actually, because now that you asked that, let me clarify, the order, because I realize I contradicted myself on that, and I apologize, that you asked first about the, what would the attendance cap of the high school events be?
For example, Sunrise Christian Academy is not under CACIA, as far as I know.
Oh, okay, yeah. If they're not under that, then I think they would fall under the four, four per participant.
Per the health order, but do they have a total person gathering limit for their facility?
Let me double-check that and see if there's a... I think in that case, let me double-check, if their event would be regulated by, I'm trying to see how we worded it specifically. The question would be if they had a school board that regulated their event. I think some of the deference on that is given to, there's a potential conflict between the powers a local health officer has and the powers under the Kansas Constitution that school boards have, public school boards, so.
So here's my concern. I think that this health order is, what, 10 pages long now? And it's confusing, it is challenging to interpret every part of this. I think to create, if you will, a bifurcated policy that applies differently for high schools versus non-high schools, this kind of a sporting event versus that kind of a sporting event is confusing and unnecessary. The fact that CACIA is actually moving in this direction, I assure everyone that they are watching the data as well. I don't think that they operate in a vacuum. They know what's going on. And I know that they are making the very best decisions they can as well. But to have a bifurcated policy for Sedgwick County, I think just adds needless confusion. I think, again, if our data starts going in the wrong direction, we can always go back and visit this. But the fact that Dr. Menz has said four people, you know, up to four spectators per player is a reasonable thing. There's a lot of families that have blended families, that maybe there's a mom and a spouse, and a dad and a spouse that want to come together and watch their child play. There's reasons why four is a good number. Now, is it going to be always four? Of course not. Some players may have nobody watching them. Some of those players may have one or two people watching them. So the reality is, we're not talking about four people per player necessarily. That's the maximum. Again, I think, as Dr. Menz was here yesterday, I talked about this. I think the spirit of the law is, you know, people are family units that come together, potentially watch their child play, or who, you know, there'd be that type of situation. But you don't want four strangers coming together. And I think that that's not really captured in this. Nevertheless, I think four is not a bad number. We can watch the data, and I think we need to leave it alone. So that's my thoughts, and I would be glad, I'm going to oppose the motion. Thank you.
Okay. I don't know if it's a point of reference, but on the order, page four, number four, the item, description of mass gatherings, on the definitions, I don't know if this is germane to the conversation, maybe I'm going to confuse it, but almost to the end, where it says mass gatherings under this definition do not include youth and adult recreational organized sports. So I'm not, I do think that they're probably outside the mass gatherings, according to reading that.
Sure.
But, just a point. Okay, Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you. I just want to state for the record that I have supported Dr. Menz, and I do support Dr. Menz. I think that if he were to feel that it would pass with two, I think he would have wrote it in there. But I think because of pressure, he put four. And that's my own personal opinion, but I want to make sure it's stated for the record, because this is not an easy thing to do. We have received a lot of pressure from all sorts of angles on this. And I think it's important that when we're making these decisions, we have to remember that we're making them to ensure that we don't have to go backwards, and that we don't have to then hear from the stories of our healthcare workers, who in their own words, are desperate for people to do and follow these rules. I don't know if you guys had a chance to read this, but these are powerful statements, and this is happening right here in our community. And that is why I just, I do support our medical community, I do support Dr. Menz. And I think, given the option, I think he would have wrote it in himself. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, Commissioner Lopez?
Just a couple more quick comments here. I also agree with supporting Dr. Menz, and I really do, in many, in many ways. But one thing I set out to do this, over this last year, running for the seat and watching the pandemic unfold, and our Board of Health be made up of non-medical professionals, was really give our medical community a voice. And not just one physician, but numerous physicians, which is why I reached out to four different physicians last night, infectious disease, someone who's actually working COVID units, and then a couple others at Ascension and Wesley, so the big hospital players here. And, you know, to get more input from people that are there in those situations, I think, is better. And so I do support our medical community, and that, so I'll keep that with, at that. But I'll also state that I will be watching the numbers too, and as things, hopefully they won't, but if they do start rising in the next few weeks, it'll be interesting to see how this conversation goes, and what, if any, things will be rolled back. Because as is, there are a lot of changes here. And so I don't know what the board as a whole will be comfortable with, which one they're going to say they feel more comfortable with rolling back. And I think one of the problems, having a Board of Health that is not made up of medical professionals, means that we're making a lot of really uneducated decisions. And so we can follow the guidance, and I agree that that's for the best. But we could also add in people that are directly affected by this every single day. I know my vision coming in here is different, because I haven't been sitting on this bench for a year. I've been working in the hospitals. My colleagues are these doctors, they are these nurses. I hear their stories. I hear how hard it is for people to hold the phone, for loved ones to say goodbye, because they can't be there. That's what's happening every day. And our medical community, for a year, has been begging to get, just recognized and listened to. And I think we have the opportunity to do that and still get to what's in here, still incrementally make those compromises to get here. But as this is, if our numbers start to rise, like I said, it'll be interesting to see which of these the board will be supportive to roll back. Thank you.
Okay, thanks for all the comments. Any others? I don't see any other comments. So there's been a motion and a second for the sporting event attendance. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
No.
Commissioner Howell?
No.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
No. So the motion fails, three to two. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have two similar amendments I'd like to pass out and discuss. I'll do these at one time. I'll work with Justin Wagner to prepare these as well, but let me discuss both of these. And I do think the discussion of Board of Health is important, because we are not experts on, there's no qualifier to be an expert on a particular issue to be on this board. The public in general has the right to run for these offices, and they represent, if you will, the background or perspective that they bring with them. But we're vastly different from each other. Some of us are business people. I'm actually a flight test engineer background person, and so I have different perspectives than maybe my colleagues do. And we all have different experiences. And I think the reality is that a board that has vast different experiences and perspectives is a healthy way to do business. We have subject matter experts at our, you know, at our beck and call. They come and provide expertise on topics that are important to making decisions. And so one thing the Board of Health does, obviously, is they're interested in health decisions. But as county commissioners, we're interested in all things. We're not just, we're not just interested in that one thing, we're interested in everything. We're interested in our unemployment numbers, we're interested in mental health and suicide rates, we're interested in public safety, and you go on. There's dozens, if not hundreds, of topics we could list that are interesting and necessary for us to delve into at certain points during our deliberations as Board of County Commissioners. Having said that, again, let me state it upfront, I love our health professionals, I want them to be protected, I want them to be successful, I want to make their job easier. I would love to see our numbers go down, so that they can begin to win this war against this pandemic. And we are in a good position. Things are moving in the right direction, and that's wonderful. Dr. Menz was very encouraging yesterday. Our flu numbers are the best they've been. You can go back a long ways and find out, we haven't seen a banner year like this on flu. Probably, he didn't tell me how long ago, but it's, that's a tremendous victory. And we are winning the battle on COVID. We're not there yet, obviously. Having said that, you know, talking about supporting Dr. Menz, for the last several weeks, in fact, going back even several months, I have mentioned that in-person dining for restaurants, I think, has been unfortunately pulled into this discussion of bars and restaurants that serve alcohol. And the curfew that has been in the health order has, in my opinion, has been unfair to places such as an IHOP, that's open 24/7, 365. And there are people in our community that use restaurants like that in the middle of the night. Law enforcement officers, for example, might need to go and get a meal. Military members might want to get a meal. Manufacturing folks might want to get a meal in the middle of the night. And it does happen. And these places don't serve alcohol, they are simply open to provide a meal to people in the community. It's their business model. And we have, we've pulled them into this health order, it says we should shut them down because we're concerned about COVID. And I guess, just in my imagination, when you talk about gathering limits and occupancy limits and masks and social distancing requirements, every other restaurant has these caveats. I don't know why we're singling out restaurants that close, I should say, stay open in the middle of the night. We treated them differently than other restaurants by forcing them to shut down outside the normal business model. So I have two amendments here. One of them is based on that. I don't know which one I should take up first. I'd be glad to just kind of present them both. And I'll make a motion on one of them, and we'll see how this goes. But the other one, you know, I'll get back into the 14th Amendment, equal treatment, treated fairly. Businesses should be treated the same as other businesses. We have some great state laws when it comes to alcohol. And one of the things that's going, has been going on since, I think, April, March or April of last year, is that we've been doing curbside or car side alcohol delivery service. So if you can pull up to Spangles, for example, and get a margarita, you can go up to a bar and make an order, they can bring out a tray of drinks with solo cups and straws. I find that very troubling. State law would never allow that. But we've gone there as a community because of the pandemic. I think the state law is actually pretty good. These restaurants and bars that serve alcohol, they would still have to abide by the gathering limits, the mask order, the social distancing requirements that every other business would follow. And I think that we ought to get back to state law. Right now, this new health order from Dr. Menz shifts it from 11 o'clock to midnight. But I think that, and again, I don't know that every bar and every restaurant would be open until 2:00 a.m. anyway. Maybe just a couple days a week, I guess it depends on the venue. But I think we're trying to do something that we think is going to substantially change the COVID numbers. The reality is, I have not yet found any clusters of COVID that relate to these types of businesses. Dr. Menz even stated yesterday in his presentation to us, that some of the things we've seen, we don't really know why the numbers are going the way they are. We'd like to claim some victory here, that we did some things that caused these things to happen. But these trends are nationwide, even worldwide. These are not necessarily things that happen only in Sedgwick County. So having said that, I think it's time to go back to state law on bars and restaurants. And so I think that the natural curfew that are required by state law are good, it's a better management of alcohol. A business that is giving excess alcohol, all excess alcohol to someone who is inebriated, if there's a, something bad happens as a consequence, they might go to court. And there's been precedent on this type of thing, where someone left a business like that and caused a deadly accident, and they went to court because these bars were responsible for giving that person too much alcohol. The reality is, the bars and restaurants do a good job, I think, of managing this issue, much better than the idea of doing curbside or car side delivery of alcohol. I just think it's bad policy. And so having said that, based on the 14th Amendment, based on the fact that the numbers are improving, I have no doubt we're going to continue to monitor these numbers going forward. By the way, we were concerned about Christmas and Thanksgiving and New Year's Day. Super Bowl actually starts this weekend. There's going to be tremendous, probably gatherings related to Super Bowl. Just in Florida alone, that one game's going to have 25,000 spectators come together. Many of them are healthcare professionals. We have Valentine's Day coming up in about 11 days, we have St. Patty's Day coming up in March. This topic seems to never end. Every month, there's another concern. The reality is, our numbers have improved despite the fact that we've had these concerns. I think it's time to move back to normal. And the reality is, we can always go back the other way. But the faster we get back to normal, the better it is for this economy, and it better is for many, many people in this community. If numbers go the wrong direction, we can always come back and visit this again. Having said that, I think it's, again, I think if I was to do the motion that talks about deleting the curfew, it takes care of both of these motions at one time. I don't have to do the second one if this was to pass. I don't think it's going to pass, but I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman. But I'd like to hear other comments before I make that motion. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've heard you ask Dr. Menz several times about restaurants not serving alcohol to remain open, and he's kind of agreed with you, just for some reason, it's never made it into the order. So I can support that. And the reason is that I've heard him speak on this issue. I have not heard him speak on the curfew on bars and nightclubs. His latest order moved it from 11 o'clock to midnight. And just as I said before, when I voted the last one, is I support the decisions that Dr. Menz has made. So you're about batting 500 right now. So I just wanted to let you know where I was at. Thank you.
Commissioner Lopez?
I'll also support this. I mean, I think when we've had these discussions, I think a big part of it was limiting where you can go that serves alcohol. So places like IHOP, like we've brought up, I think that's appropriate. I will add the caveat, if our, some of our concerns for the proposals I were, were the complexity and the length of our public health order, this also adds to it. And when we, if our numbers rise and we have to seriously consider rolling back, this will be another thing that we have to take into account. I agree that we have to do something, we have to do better with our economy. There are so many things that we, you know, have the potential to do. But I wonder if we open too fast, our numbers rise, and then we have to haul and slow back. Because it's easy, once you're here, to maintain than it is to then bring those numbers back down. So I wonder if it would have an opposite effect on our economy by opening too quickly. So that's just, that's my comment. I will support this.
Okay, Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you. I think that there are, are you going, if you're going to take these separately, we're going to take these separately?
It depends on the comments, if I, since there's any support. If I, since there's any support whatsoever for the removal of curfew, I'd make that motion. If I hear there's no support for that, I'll just go on to the in-person dining for restaurants that do not serve alcohol. Depends on the comments. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. I do think that restaurants like IHOP and those others who stay open that don't serve alcohol, I have been supportive of you this entire time in regards to that, and so I would support the in-person dining for restaurants change. Thank you.
Okay. You've had some good comments. I kind of agreed that I saw that, as a matter of fact, I thought yesterday maybe Dr. Menz was a little surprised that it wasn't in there to allow restaurants. So I would be also, I think that's a reasonable and a supportive position, and I would be on that. I would -- I'm struggling with getting into the -- I'm not going to support the curfew at this point yet, because I know Dr. Menz is working hard with all that information. That's probably where I'm at. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you. I'm sorry. My apologies. I have one more question.
Okay.
So, Justin, when we, if we were to make this adjustment, those restaurants who serve alcohol, would they be allowed to stop serving alcohol at a certain time, at the curfew time? I mean, I think this gets in a little bit of a gray area when we start to say, this restaurant that doesn't serve alcohol at all, but could we have a restaurant that does serve alcohol stop serving alcohol and stay open?
As it's worded right now, the motion that Commissioner Howell's contemplating, it would not allow a restaurant that serves alcohol to be open past midnight, because they would fit into the definition in subsection four, the one immediately before this one, that says any places that are licensed to serve alcohol for on-premises consumption have to close by midnight.
So it depends on their licensing?
Yes. And if there is a will of the board to amend that, to allow these businesses, then we would need to go in and change both four and five and have a modified motion. But this motion itself, my understanding of it and read on it, and I certainly defer, if Mike Papoun has a different read on it as well, or if it's not capturing Commissioner Howell's intent, would be that it would only apply to those restaurants that do not serve alcohol. Like you said, the distinction would be the licensing of the business.
Yeah. So I would like to, I would like to support this. I think that we might get some questions. I can already hear a couple of business owners that I know that might call me and say, well, hey, if I stop, if I stop serving alcohol at a certain point. So, you know, I am very supportive of getting businesses open, and making these tough decisions is not really necessarily ones that I want to make, but this is the seat that I sit in, and these are the decisions that I have to make. And so I guess I'd like to open it up for that discussion. I mean, have you considered that, Commissioner Howell?
Yeah. The intent is, as Justin just described, I think that was very accurate, that any place that's licensed to sell alcohol would not be open to this. It's simply restaurants that don't have that license. It's about licensing. Now, if the restaurant wanted to forfeit their license, they could probably get into this. It's probably a decision they would have to make, but I think the reality is, if they want to retain that license, they would not be qualified to be exempted under this clause.
Okay. I think in conversation, Commissioner Howell, you wanted to make a motion?
Yes, sir. So let me just wrap up my comments and make a motion. So again, I can count to three. I'll just say, again, I continue to be concerned about the Fourteenth Amendment with respect to dealing with some of these businesses differently than other businesses. I think that's a concern. We ought to, we ought to really resolve that in our own minds. I'm troubled with what we're doing. I think the state law is better with respect to how it manages the dealing with this issue of alcohol. I think this idea of curbside and car side alcohol service is insane. I think it's a bad idea, and I think we need to get back to state law as soon as possible. Nevertheless, I don't think there's support amongst my colleagues for that motion, so I will not make the motion regarding the removal of curfew. But I am left with this idea that we will, I would like to make a motion regarding this other, this other issue, the overnight restaurants. I just want to say, I do feel badly, because I think this is something that we've raised literally months ago, and we're just now dealing with it. The last several weeks, in fact, the last six weeks ago, when Dr. Menz issued the last order, I brought this up, and he said at that time, yeah, that makes a lot of sense. Let me take a look at it. And here we are, six weeks later, months later, still dealing with the same issues. I think we really need to get this into this order. So, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we would, I move that the Board of County Commissioners amend its order number 2021-2, section 4.5, to read as follows. Restaurants not serving alcohol may remain open to in-person dining without any limitations on hours of operation.
Second. Okay, there's a motion, a second. A point of clarity, Justin, so this sentence would be added to item five?
And I apologize, Chairman. I think I should have said it amends that section. When I say to read as follows, it would replace it, just to clarify the, and I think that, Commissioner Howell, is that your intent? Okay, that's.
I'm sorry.
So I apologize for the wording, but it would be, it would replace all of that particular subsection. And so currently, it reads, just for reference, Chairman, it says, "All restaurants must abide by a curfew," and it goes on to explain how there's a midnight curfew, and then again, they can reopen at 5:00 a.m. It would delete all of that and replace it with the one sentence that's in there.
Okay. I've taken a minute to read number five, so I appreciate. I concur. Okay. Okay, there's a motion and a second for the in-person dining for restaurants. Any other comments? I don't see any. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meissner?
Aye. Okay, the motion carries, and no other motions on this off-agend item. Thank you, but we were going to have a brief, well, a discussion, but I think, Manager, why don't you weigh in on the current scenario with the Board of Health out of courtesy for Commissioner Lopez, who was not part of some of these discussions earlier, but was paying attention to them over the past year. But why don't you, if you would update us in what you believe where we're at? I appreciate it.
Thank you, Chairman. Commissioner Lopez, it is true that we did talk about this last year, about a year ago now, when COVID started, and I think as we discussed through that, it's all about timing now and getting through the crisis, which we hope we're in the home stretch of, and then resurrecting that discussion. I would like to, Chairman and Commission, make a recommendation that we staff this particular topic at a staff meeting as quickly as you want to. I don't know. It's all about timing again, but we could staff this as early as next week or the week after, have discussion, get guidance from the Commission, and make whatever changes or moves going forward that you all see fit.
Okay, well, I would, I'm not sure what the timing would be for a staff meeting, personally. Could you maybe just, you and Mr. Papoun, just kind of, in your weekly meetings with each of us, see what the urgency is? I mean, I think one time we were talking about, as we saw, the end inside of the pandemic. It'd be a good time to address it. Others might want to be more aggressive. Others may want to not do it at all. But if, but I'm open for a staff meeting. I just don't know for sure how soon. But other comments? Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Commissioner Lopez, for bringing this up. When it was brought up last year, it was in the heat of things, and when I brought it up, it wasn't necessarily to do it right then. So I'm glad that we're bringing it up again, to have this conversation, to include our partners across the street. I know Councilwoman Tuttle has been talking about this for quite some time, so I do believe there is support for this in the community, especially now with the events that have occurred. From my understanding, doing research last year about this, this would be a pretty significant change, and I think it would, I'd like to know the timeframe. So when you do decide to brief us or at a staff meeting, I want to know what's the reality and how long will it take if, say, we were to say, go on March 1st? I'm just saying hypothetically. So that's really what I'm looking for, is how long does this process start to finish? An estimation, how long would it take? Thank you, Chairman.
And if I can just add to that, we probably need to look at the state, as Commissioner Howell suggested earlier, there might be state statutes that are involved in this that might, not sure what the exemptions are or how we can navigate through that, but I didn't mean to go in front of you, Commissioner Lopez, but I just wanted to add that. Commissioner Lopez?
So thank you. I appreciate that. I think really what's going to dictate how soon we bring this up in a staff meeting is if we can get a couple of things answered, and one would be, you know, what is going to be, how are we going to measure when we're going to be safe enough to be able to implement that? So what would be the factors that we would have to see hit certain marks to go forward with that? So I think getting an answer to that, and then, you know, going from there, I do think we should reach out to the state. But I think just, it seems like common sense that a Board of Health be made up of health professionals. And I know when we look at what that could look like, it's not just physicians at doctors' offices, because public health is much bigger than a pandemic. So environmental service, you know, people that work within that space, there's a lot that goes into it more than just a doctor. So I do think it's important to have, you know, someone who's dedicated their lives to science to really speak on these matters. So I think just as soon as we can figure out how we make the determination on when it's safe enough to go forward with that, will dictate then when we start discussing this in staff meetings.
One thing that we'll discuss right after this meeting, I want to caucus with Mike and Justin, and if we don't require any state authorization, is if we have the authority at this bench to do this, then the second question comes into mind is the timing. If there is some type of state component, though, we might want to tackle this sooner rather than later, because they are in session now. So we will discuss that right after this meeting, get back with all of you, and get you apprised.
Okay. And I think that, let me add, I think each of us might have received a document, like, of a draft, of a makeup of what a board would look like. Does anybody recall seeing that, or maybe that's just one I got?
I've heard that one exists, but I've not seen.
Right.
And I talked to Councilwoman Tuttle on Monday, and she said she has that and she could send it over if we would want it, so I could reach out and ask her to send that to us.
I mean, it's a starting point, for sure. Okay. All right. Well, thank you. Is this satisfactory for this discussion? Okay. So, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent agenda.
Tom?
Good morning, Commission, again. Tom Stills, County Manager's Office, recommend approval of consent items P through Z this morning.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve consent items.
Second.
And a second. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meissner?
Aye. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Legislative issues.
Good afternoon.
Hello, Akeem.
Hey, good afternoon, Chairman. Keem Ashford, Communications Director, just here to provide you a few key updates to our legislative platform. I'd like to give a kudos to Commissioner Cruz, who actually testified before the local government committee, and her comments, her testimony was very well received. As you guys know, that bill did pass out of committee, and we'll head to the Senate floor, the full House, or, excuse me, the full Senate floor. A date and time on that, we really don't have that as of yet, but I will continue to check with Jason on a timeframe of when that will be heard. Moving on, also kudos to Commissioner Howell on his testimony to the Taxation Committee on our Property Tax Transparency Bill. There are some, there were some additional comments after your testimony, in which I was asked to put together a letter that was approved by the Commission to send to that committee, which has already been done so with the help of County Counselor Mike Papoun. So just waiting to hear back more comments on that. We do know that the committee will take this back up. It was actually on the schedule for this week, which has been continued. We don't have the agenda for next week as of yet, if you're talking to Jason this morning, but we expect that they will take this up again next week. So definitely will have my ear to that committee. It's really helpful to kind of watch all of these committee hearings online on YouTube. If any of the Commission would like to have those each week, I can definitely provide those for you if you'd like. Moving on to our nuisance abatement bill, the committee did have some discussion on this yesterday, Tuesday, but there are several amendments, and there were several ideas that came from this that the committee is actually taking up, and so it's just kind of frames around exactly which parts of the nuisance abatement bill will be taken up and kind of how we will exercise that as a county. So a couple of key amendments that they're asking to be included is agriculture, so agriculture and grain won't be a part of a nuisance abatement, so grain elevators, that kind of thing, as ISOs, and as well as assurance of the county providing notice before we exercise that nuisance abatement. So those are the key updates that I have for you on the federal side. Commissioner Cruz did kind of bring this up earlier during Brent Shelton's piece this morning, and that has to really do with the funding for local governments, so down to the state, down to local governments. There is some bipartisan support for funding. Really, it really comes down to the amount of money at this point. Republican is kind of caucusing a number that's a lot less than what the Democratic majority is asking for, but we hope that they'll work that out here in the next couple of weeks with support from the President's office. With that, I'll stand for any questions that you may have or any additional comments that Mike may want to add.
Okay. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of points. I did actually travel to Topeka to testify on that nuisance abatement bill, as well as the property tax transparency bill, and the cool thing was, I had about four hours between the bills, and so I was able to do some pretty good lobbying on behalf of the county on our legislative platform. I talked to quite a few senators, especially, and a number of House members, and I think that, I guess my read of it is, I think the Charter Commission is probably not going to be, I don't think it's going to have any problem passing, as long as they, as long as they continue to have it, you know, it'll move forward. It's a fairly non-contradversal bill. The nuisance abatement bill, I think, is actually going to be problematic, and I just want to tell you that the amount of discussion that's happened by the committee members and the number of amendments that have been discussed, I just, my sense of it is, it's not going to pass. I'll just tell you that right now. The tax bill, I do think that it's probably likely to pass. It's, in fact, I was surprised, there was only two, sorry, there was only three people who testified, in the House Tax Committee, there were only three people who testified neutral, and one person testified as an opponent, and that was primarily about library property tax funds. So there was about 10 or 12 proponents of the bill. I'm a little bit frustrated, because I think that they never, they did not really hear the points we made, unfortunately, which is why I had to write, working with you, Akeem, thank you for your work, write to them to, again, reiterate the point that we really can't implement this in 2021, and that's probably the biggest sticking point of this bill. It's actually retroactive, and as much as I support the intent of this bill, I think it's a very good bill, transparency and accountability of elected officials. I think it's, that's a very good mission. It is not possible to do that in this, in the current year, and unfortunately, I think they're not really hearing us on this. Bear in mind, this bill's already passed the Senate, passed the Senate Committee on Day Two of the Legislature, and a couple days later, it went through general orders and actually passed over to the House. So this bill's actually very, very mature compared to every other bill in the entire legislature right now. I would also like to highlight that House Bill 2193 has been introduced by Senator Lethifas Godot on suspended driver's licenses. It has not been scheduled for a hearing yet, but I do think that we need to monitor that bill also. I've not had a chance to review this current version of this bill, but it's House Bill 2193, and I would like to potentially testify in favor of that, again, assuming that the language is acceptable to Sedgwick County. I'd ask my colleagues to please review that bill, and that's all I've got. Thank you so much.
Okay. Well, and thank you, Commissioner Howell and Commissioner Cruz, for your testimony, and we're getting a few things accomplished, and thanks for updating. Akeem, I don't see any other questions at this point.